Okay, it's five o'clock and we will call the work session to order. Place card.
Mr. Roach. Mr. May.
Here.
Mr. Valhatch.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mayor Mack.
Here, we do have a quorum present and just to let you all know this is a work session. We normally meet in the conference room across the hall, but since there was so many folks, we can only get so many folks in that room under the fire marshal orders and fire codes, safety codes. So we decided we'd move over here. But this is our more casual meeting tonight, so please don't be intimidated by the dais and speaking of the microphone, but we would ask that folks go to the microphone so we can get the information in the record for the city clerk. It's just easier to come up to the mic. And then as a reminder too, we have a, under citizen comments, people can have up to five minutes on an issue that they would like to address. And if there's more than one person on a particular issue, we ask, we don't want 50 people going over and saying the same issue. We just, you know, ask that you have a spokesperson for that group and if there are any groups that here that want to speak as a group. And let's see, if we ask that you conclude your remarks at that five minute point, we do ask that you comply because of the rules and procedures that we will follow. So with that being said, the first item is citizen comments. Does anybody have any citizen comments they'd like to come forward? And Chief Donna Hecker, come forward. If you don't mind just stating your name for the record, you don't have to give your address. You can if you want, but it's not required. But we do ask that you give your names just so the city clerk can remember.
May I wait in there with staff?
Oh, you're gonna wait? Okay. I didn't hear.
I don't know why she was waiting, but couldn't hear that.
Oh, that's okay. She just said she was gonna wait. Under, I'm sorry, the city term was, when did you say you wanted to wait till what?
Jim Parish.
Oh, okay, she's gonna wait with staff. Sorry. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. If not, we'll go to our agenda items. Any commissioners have any questions on the tentative agenda? Okay. And let's see, city manager reports and staff comments.
Your honor, I do not have a report tonight in the interest of time, but I will check with our department directors. Chief Wilhoe.
Perhaps I could lighten the agenda just a little bit if the, consider the bid process for the third-party downtown parking enforcement. Unless there's a lot of discussion that, or questions that the board has, right now I'll, I can just report on the progress that I've come up with a draft of bid specifications that needs to be reviewed. And like I say, it's a first draft, so it needs to be reviewed by the city solicitor and the finance director. But we're moving towards putting together a bid package.
Okay, any questions for the, for the chief?
Do you want us to ask one now or are we gonna pass the question and just, will we get to it?
Somebody taking it off, I think.
Unless there's a great deal of discussion, I mean.
I had a few questions. If we can still discuss it, I would, I would like to at least.
Well then, okay, then we could just.
Is that okay?
Yeah, we.
Just three easy questions.
At your pleasure. Well, I like easy questions. Do you like to do it now or later?
I'm fine doing it later, we can just move forward.
Okay.
Is that okay, chief?
Thank you, chief. Thank you very much. Oh, by the way, the folks did a great job this weekend with all the events in town, as always, as did all the staff.
Mr. Scal. Any report? Do you have a report, Mr. Scal?
After the deadline for agenda abstracts, I realized that there was one more that I would have liked to gotten on. Last year, we did a, an annual contract for odor control on west side of Frankfurt, and that contract is up for expiration, and I'd like to go ahead and get it on the May agenda for renewal.
Okay, if there's no objections.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Parking rec. directors. Jim Parish.
We have two quick things. Number one, we'll be updating you on the audio group, the pavilion that's coming June 11th and 12th, with the ceremony on the 12th, and they are delivering the building on Wednesday. So it is coming and we'll be giving you all the facts when we get the itinerary. So that's gonna be a great event for Frankfurt. Secondly, Donna Hecker from Walk Bike Frankfurt has an announcement that, an award that Frankfurt won. I'll let her tell you about it.
All right, thanks. Thanks for this opportunity. Several years ago, Walk Bike Frankfurt began working with the city of Frankfurt and county of Franklin County to discuss ways in which to make our community more bicycle and pedestrian friendly. So earlier this year, we came before the city commission and we asked for their support and our application to have Frankfurt named a bicycle-friendly community. This is an award that is given by the League of American Bicyclists, and to give you an idea of how few communities get it, this year they awarded 18 bicycle-friendly community awards and 17 honorable mentions. Unfortunately, we did not receive the bicycle-friendly community designation. We were, however, one of the 18 communities that got an honorable mention. So we're very proud of that. It shows how much progress has been made in Frankfurt over the last few years, and we're looking forward to even more. In July, we will receive a report from the league, which will give us some directions on how we can continue the application process. Apparently, there are only a few steps that stand between us and bicycle-friendly community. So I'm really excited about that, and to just give you an idea of what that means to some folks, I've got a very brief email I got from somebody last week on the very day that we were notified of the designation. It says, "Hello, I may be moving to Frankfurt soon, and I'd be interested in biking around the city. I've found plans for bike paths and bike lanes, but I haven't found anything that shows what has been completed. Do you have a map of current bike-friendly paths in the city? This would be extremely helpful and could help influence my housing location decision." So just a little example of what it means to folks who are thinking about moving to Frankfurt.
Very nice. And we thank you for your work.
Thank you. Wonderful having the support. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you all. Did you have any questions?
Jim and I have one here together. As you're aware of the project coming up at Cove Spring that the audio group is doing, we've been looking at the road that leads into it. That park is beginning a lot of traffic in and out, and we've come up with a plan to pave the road and a parking area up there to cut down on dust and to make travel a little bit easier. So we'd like to add to the agenda next month, the amount of the paving, and make that an agenda item for your approval.
That's great.
If there's no objection, we'll add that. Thank you.
Then I just have one more quick one, if I may. Every year, as part of our MS4 program, we have to fill out an annual report, and our consultant helps us prepare this. We've done so this year, and every year, we have to get the top elected official to sign off on it, so we'll have to add that to, if I can, add that to the agenda to get an approval.
If there's no objections, we'll add that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any further department directors? Rebecca Hall, grants manager, any comments? Steve, will you hold your comments for the agenda?
My budget.
That concludes the staff reports.
Thank you all so much. And again, thanks to all of our departments who worked on the many events that we had in downtown Frankfurt this past weekend. You all did a wonderful job, as always, and we're glad to see so many folks using Frankfurt as their destination point. We did receive some honors that were pointed out to me. Our city clerk, Ramona Newman, and city commissioner Tommy Haynes were both presenting community awards for their work with the KSU career counseling placement office, and the award was based on their support for helping folks at the placement office help students find jobs in the community. So we thank you all for that support. And I don't know if we've got anything else anybody wants to call to our attention, but that was one that we're very happy to see. Next item is old business. Commissioners have any old business? Okay, next item is new business. Any new business? Commissioner.
I haven't seen anything in writing, but I just wanted to make sure with summer break coming up, I know last year with Louisville Hill, it kind of went on and it seemed to almost interfere with the beginning of school, and I just want to make sure that any projects we have that are going to be around school systems, that we start trying to look at trying to do them in the summer months versus while schools in session. So if there's any projects coming along, that we just gonna look at that.
The city manager will get something updated to all of us. I know we'll have the paving program going, but most of that shouldn't take too long, I guess, and I'm sure once we get the schedule, that'll be announced. There was something on US, somebody's paving on the highway. We got that information.
127.
127.
Isn't it? That's up through October, I believe, isn't it? September, October.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Any other old business? I mean, new business? Okay. If not, we'll go to discussion items, and did request to have the, let me find it, the insurance report from our health insurance folks. It was requested that we go ahead and move that to the top since they're gonna have to get back out of town, they're out of town, so if there's no objections, okay. We'll go ahead and, who's gonna make that?
HR director.
HR director.
Randy Donahue and.
I don't know, how about that? I don't, that's good or bad.
It's that camera. They're toggling the camera switch around, so it's.
It's got arthritis.
Okay, we have Norma McDowell with Wells Fargo Insurance and Randy Donahue, our HR director, gonna make a presentation. And Daryl Hoff is also here, if there's any questions, not to throw you under the bus there, but if people have other questions, Daryl's here.
Norma's, I've just distributed a presentation that she's gonna go through pretty briefly and seek some input from the commission, provide some information about where we are with the health plan right now, and the healthcare reform issues that'll be affecting it in the next couple of years, so. That, I'll turn it over to Norma.
All right, I just kind of wanted to give an overview for some of you all that were not here last year. Back in July of 2011, we made a few changes to the plan. I just tried to put it up to date so you know exactly what we did at that point in time. We took from one plan to three plans, and we also went from having two tiers, just employee-only and family, to single-employee spouse, employee-child and children plans. We changed the employee contribution a little bit, and then we did an all-out campaign with employee education. On the next page behind this is the breakdown of all the three plans that were put in. If you notice, we put in a high deductible health plan with an HSA, and we have two PPO plans, a core and a buy-up plan. From those plan changes, we did achieve success. We got a lot of employee engagement, involvement in the process. That's in turn helped us control costs because people are understanding what their benefits are and how to use their benefits. We achieved over 70 people enrolled in the HSA plan, and we had 22 people that were waived coverage, and of those 22 people, some of those people put money in, the money was put in when they waived the plan into an HRA or deferred contribution. And right now, due to all those changes that we've done, even though they were minimal changes, we are seeing the claims down anywhere from 5 to 10 percent. So with healthcare reform, there are some things that we have to look at going forward. One of the fees that are involved in healthcare reform is a reinsurance fee. That fee is a $63 per month, I mean, per year fee per participant. So right now, the plan as of April 1st had about 740 participants. That's gonna be a little over $46,000 worth of fees that will be over and above what your healthcare costs are currently. And we also have to look at how you're gonna handle your hourly seasonal employees to make sure that you fit into the guidelines with healthcare reform. When we talk about the renewal, which the renewal will be January the 1st, 2014, we've got it, gotten started already. Last year, we were able to obtain a three-year rate hold for the fixed costs, which are the cost through the TPA. So we were able to hold those rates. Those rates for the fixed costs, those are the only fixed costs we have, and that's about 5 percent of your total cost for the health plan. The rest of the 95 percent of the cost is based on your stop-loss premiums, and because this group is self-funded, and we market that every year, so we'll be able to know, hopefully, everything's running really good this year. Hopefully, those premiums either hold constant or we can get some competitive marketing out there and be able to reduce the cost and the claims. And the claims divide the most part of your cost of your plan. The reason why we came here today is what we want to put before you guys. We want to find out the direction that you want us to go. We've had a lot of questions from the commission about where we need to go, how to cut costs, what you need to do, what other people are doing. So we just put this out so you all could try to give us and look at giving us some direction, maybe in the next month or so, of what your mission statement is, how you want to handle your employee benefit package going forward. If you want to continue doing what you're doing for your employees, if you want to make any changes, and any direction of what we have to do as a budgetary item, you know, maybe some companies come out and they give you a flat dollar amount that they want their benefits to fit into. It's really, we need your direction. I think that, you know, most of the employers, there's lots of ways to control costs. I put some lists here, but your plan design is a big piece of it. Your employer, employee contribution strategy. You've got a wellness program in place. How do you want to use that wellness program? Do you want to tie that into a premium? Do you want to have a spousal surcharge? How do you want to handle dependents? Do you want to tie into your wellness program a non-smoking discount? Those are things that you can look at going forward, but we really want some directions from you all, how you want to achieve these cost savings, or if you want to do anything this year. I think there was some questions, and I put some of the answers to some of yours' questions. I think one of you had a question about putting in a lower-cost plan for new employees. I did put in a response from our practice leader, who is a compliance attorney from Wells Fargo. That is his opinion. Legally, you can do it, but there are some problems that you're gonna run into. As a former HR director, I don't think it's a good idea to do that, but you know, there's it in a legal term there, depending on if that's something you guys might want to do going forward. Also, one of the big questions that's been going ongoing is how do you all compare to other entities? So we took the county's plan and the city's, the state's plan. We used the state's plan, the non-smoker plan, which is the state optimum plan. That is the plan that the majority of the state employees are enrolled in. And if you look a couple pages back there, there's a cost comparison. It's broken down by plan design, so single, employee, children, child or children, employee, spouse, and family plans. We have the city's contribution for Plan Two, the two PPO plans, Plan Two and Plan Three. They're both the PPO plans. We did not put the HSA plan in here because we didn't think it was a good comparison. It's kind of hard to compare a high deductible health plan and the PPO plans. Put your premium in there, the actual monthly premium, the total cost that the plan pays for the employees, and the percentage that the employer pays for the employees per each tier. And I think you can see a comparison. That's just for your information, so you can kind of see how you, your two PPO plans stack up to the state and Franklin County plans, which there's a substantial difference. And if you look past that, I actually even put all the plans the city has and compared the plan design with the Commonwealth's plan design and Franklin County's plan design, so you would have a good gauge of what you're looking. You're not really comparing apples to apples, but they're not too far off. The difference is on, you know, contribution and some of that strategy. The next sheet is the health plan enrollment comparison. We gave you what the enrollment percentage is per tier. That's interesting. If you look at Frankfurt, the single plans, there's 42 percent of your membership is in the single plan, and it goes all the way down to the family plans. There's 41 percent of your employees who are enrolled in the family plan. The state optimum plan, 29 percent enrolled in family. In Franklin County, they only have 3 percent. And then in the middle part of the page, we gave a breakdown of the city's enrollment by tier, so you could actually see the numbers there of what's associated with each tier. From your questions, you know, as far as providing more choices, we have three plans out there. You can always provide more choices, but sometimes when you give too many choices, it confuses people. How, you know, making differences in plan design, the three plans are not that far apart right now. Maybe you want to look at some plan design changes, but one of the things that we need to keep in consideration in 2018, if all stays constant, that Cadillac plan with healthcare reform will be enacted, and so there might be a penalty. I think your, at least your buy-up plan fits into that Cadillac plan right now as it is. So there might need to be some changes going forward, at least by 2018. Wellness, there was questions about wellness. How do you have a successful wellness plan? One of the things you have to engage the employees. Some people have premium discounts for participation in the wellness program, and I think the success of the wellness program, you have to constantly be reevaluating what you're doing, whether it's working or not. If it's not working, then you have to go back to the drawing board and do something different. And I think, you know, with the implementation of the wellness program this year, there's an opportunity for, to really tap into that the next couple of years, to see, you know, whether or not it's successful, if it can help you control your costs. With healthcare reform, wellness is gonna be a big piece of that project. I mean, wellness is really stressed with healthcare reform. Does anybody have any question? I know it was real fast, but I know you have a big agenda tonight.
Any members have any questions for Ms. McDowell? Make sure the folks who you got ahead.
Over here.
It's okay.
Too many choices, sometimes confusing. I could understand that. But is there a, does, is there also a way that if you have more choices, you can lower your costs?
Yes, yes. Because there are some people, and we found that with the high deductible health plan with the HSA.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what that did. We were really, I think, you know, we, there were some concerns here that people would not buy into it, but some people don't have any healthcare costs, and some people likes an avenue like a high deductible health plan with an HSA with a lower premium, because they never go to the doctor. So I tell you, I think the most important thing is the education, which I know Randy really took a lot of time educating everyone, and we did lots of meetings to explain how to use your benefits, whether or not you need the richer plan or not, how the HSA works, and how you can set aside money for future. I think that that's what, you need to have probably a bigger space between each of the three plans that we have.
That was my follow-up question. It looks to me like they're too close.
Right.
If we asked you to give us a, let's just say, for example, a four-year plan.
Yes.
To reduce healthcare costs.
Mm-hmm.
And you came up with one that reduced them a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Reduced them a fair amount.
Mm-hmm.
And reduced them just some.
Mm-hmm.
Is that possible to do?
Yes.
Because I guess my concern is, is that we've got a great plan.
Yes.
And the problem, and that's a really good thing.
Mm-hmm.
But the problem is, is a lot of people want to get on that great plan. And so where, for example, the city used to subsidize the family plan, the city paid $200 and the family paid $200 in 1994. Well, from then on, except for one year, I think a couple of years ago, the city commission did something.
Right.
It went to where the city was paying $1,400 or $1,500.
Right.
And the employees still paid 200. So I think, I think what's happened is we've gotten out of balance with the rest of the plans in the community.
Right.
So I guess my worry is, is I don't want to make draconian changes in the plan, but I do think that for the citizens who we represent, the plan we have is a little too rich.
Right.
And it's attracting too many people on it, and so we end up having to have higher costs. So if it was possible.
Right.
You could maybe give us something where we incrementally could make some changes.
Changes, yes, yes.
But that's just one person.
Right. Yes, we can do that, yes.
Any other commissioners have questions? Okay, well, thank you, sir. I'm sorry, go ahead. Commissioner.
I would just like to say, I think we're on the right, the right track.
Right.
With this, and the decisions the previous commission made in order to get this ball rolling. I think we're on the right path in trying to make sure that, that we are watching for reform and staying, staying within the plans, because Commissioner Roach, you should have seen the plan before this.
[laughing]
It was very.
Right.
Super juicy-rich. So.
Well, and that's where it goes back to the mission statement. You have to give us direction, how you want to tackle this, how aggressive.
Right, so if we, if we asked you for, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, go ahead.
So if we, so if we, if the commission asked you for a four-year plan with, with three levels of.
Yes.
Gradual cuts, then we could then have something to look at to see which way we wanted.
Right.
To go, and then focus the mission based on that.
Right.
In a sense, because we may not know enough yet.
Right.
And we also don't know what other laws might do as well.
Right. It's kind of a moving target with healthcare reform, but you know, I mean, that 2018 Cadillac plan, we just need to make sure that if we need to reassess that higher-end plan by the time we get there, that we moved off of that a little bit, so there's no penalties for that. That is, if it's enacted in 2018. It might be moved out, you know, but really, all we really know is what we need to do for 2014, and I think everything is in compliance with '14.
And mayor, may I?
Sure, go ahead.
And I guess that's the other thing. I'm kind of, I guess, the one who brought up the idea of maybe offering a second plan to new hires.
Right.
Because the other thing we need to look at is the longevity of employees that we've had, and if we have a certain number of employees that have been here 15-plus years, maybe trying to look at a new kind of plan to help wade through is something else to look at. But it also depends how many employees we have at that level versus how many employees we have at five or less.
And you have to meet the discrimination testing. So we need to make sure that you don't discriminate against that newer employee. So that, that's where you, I think you have to tread lightly with that. But I agree, you know, I think there's some opportunity to look at some, at least a three to four-year plan out of how aggressive you want to be.
Can I jump?
Yep.
Thanks, Commissioner. Is there, like, if we asked, if we, if there was support now to ask you, I know we can't vote on anything, but like, if there was support to get that from you, how long would it take to generate something like that?
I think we could probably do it in a couple weeks, two to three weeks. At least by June, the June meeting.
Well, would that be all right with everybody? We get some more information?
Yes.
June work session.
June work session?
See you in June.
See you in June, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you all so much. Next item, current campaign, we have with us tonight Reverend Herschel York, and Reverend York is also a minister at Franklin Baptist Church. Good to have you, sir. And he will come forward, and what we're gonna do is. And he will come forward, and what we're going to do is let Reverend York speak, and then if, I think you're, you can speak for the whole group, or make a presentation, I guess I should say. And then you, you don't have like a five, you don't have like a five-minute limit, since you're on the agenda, you don't have to stick to a five-minute. We don't want you to go like five hours, but, all right, if you want. No, we don't want to. Just kidding. So you don't have to.
It's a dangerous thing to not give a Baptist preacher a limit, I'll tell you.
You don't have to stick to the five.
Well, I, I'll be as brief as possible, but just share some things with you, and reflecting on the proposed fairness ordinance. I've read it carefully. I was here for Mr. Hartman's presentation, and I, I want to say at the outset, first of all, just the discomfort I feel at speaking out against a concept like fairness. You know, once you name it that, of course, everybody's for fairness, and I'm for fairness. And I, I, I want to say that I, I believe that all people are created in the image of God and are worthy of respect and dignity, and as American citizens, they have civil rights, that they, and so I, I, I want to affirm that, even for those with whom I disagree with, with their lifestyle. I, I would oppose and disavow any kind of oppression or violence of those people. And the reality is, we have laws against that. We have ways to combat that through established laws. I mean, violence against anybody for any reason is wrong. And so when I, when I look at this fairness ordinance, I, I've got to say that in the classes that are protected here, it makes no distinction between a protection of what a person is innately and undeniably and obviously, and what a person is through their behavior, or what a person chooses to do behaviorally. And frankly, I, I think there is a distinction between that. When, if I am a landlord or an employer, an employer, I think that I should have the right to judge if certain behaviors are against either my conscience or against my economic well-being, and to make judgments based on those behaviors. And, and in the, in the case of gay and lesbian and bisexual and transgender, I know that's a, there's a debate about whether or not someone is, are those things innately and inherently and by birth, or whether or not one chooses to do that. But the reality is, I can't know that about a person unless they reveal it to me. If, if an Asian-American walks in, I know that's an Asian-American, and people know I'm Anglo, I know an African-American when I see one, but if someone reveals, unless someone reveals their sexual identity and their sexual practices, you don't know that. And frankly, that's not something that should come up in the workplace anyway. So I, I believe that there is a difference there. And frankly, I'm, I'm as concerned about the marginalization of those who object to a fairness ordinance. I mean, I've experienced this, and I know what that feels like, and I think that passing an ordinance like this unnecessarily divides the community. And either this ordinance is wrong-headed from the beginning, or else it does not go far enough. But you, you really can't say, for instance, let's take the issue of gender identity, which is a protected class under this ordinance. Gender identity, by the definition in the document that I read, that you were presented with, is really an issue of self-identity, and it's not biological. And yet, in the exemptions, exemptions are made for someone, for instance, to force an employee to, to dress according to one's biological gender. There are, there's an allowance made for facilities to require that a person use the restroom of their biological gender. And so I don't think you can have it both ways. I don't think you can say that gender identity is someone's own self-identification of, of whether they're male or female, and then allow someone under any circumstan, under any circumstance to define that for them. And the very fact that this allows exemptions for religious organizations, that it allows exemptions for people whose apartments are a part of their home, or a certain number of units, or a certain number of employees, again, if it's wrong, it's wrong, and say that it's wrong. But the reality is, you don't have a discrimination problem here in Frankfurt in this way. You have a math problem. The math doesn't work out on this. I, I listened to the presentation the last time, I've read the document, and according to this, and the financial impact of this, the argument is made that over the next ten years, there will only be, on average, based on projections based on Frankfurt's population, there will only be one complaint per year that has to be looked into. And only one of, out of ten of those, in other words, once per decade, would there be one that had to be adjudicated. Now, I would suggest and submit to you that any other group coming before you, same. Now, look, we want you to pass an ordinance that is only going to, you know, it's going to invite ninety percent of the complaints that are raised by this ordinance will not have merit. And once, over the next decade, you'll actually have to make a decision. I, I think you would say, well, that's not really worthy of our attention, in a city the size of Frankfurt, to pass an ordinance that unnecessarily divides the community, that makes those of us who have religious objections to this feel marginalized. I think it, it's, it is not worth that effort. I think it, it does not pass the test of need. And frankly, this isn't about protection, it's about PR. It's designed to make a statement. And I'm, I'm telling you, I think there are enough citizens of Frankfurt that would disagree with that statement that it makes, that it's not worth you passing this ordinance. I know they're, they produce polls that say, well, eighty percent of residents are in favor of this. And you know as well as I do, that depends on how you ask the question. If I asked the question, should an employer have right to determine such and such, eighty percent of the people would say, yes, he should. So I encourage you to say unequivocally, we're against oppression, we're against violence against people, that's not what's at issue here, but we don't think that by their own statistics, by their own statement and testimony, that one case in the next decade is worth passing a new ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend. Do you want to, well, I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions if someone has any.
Questions?
Can we turn the heat up in here?
Are you cuddled? Well, is that for Reverend York? Thank you, Reverend York. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for giving our speaker your attention. Okay.
Not the heat, like, the, I was talking literally to temperature.
We knew what you meant. We knew you meant the air temperature.
We don't like heated meetings.
Go ahead, Commissioner Roach.
Well, I didn't know if we were going to discuss it or not.
You didn't discuss it last night.
Are you taking any citizen comments?
Yeah. Well, actually, we, we took comments in April about this, and then we offered at the, at the front of the citizen, for citizen comments. Or you said.
But they might make, some might make more sense in, in sort of an answer, a little rebuttal to Reverend York. I would like to speak.
I was trying to think on our rules I don't have in front of me.
Well, generally, our citizen comments, unless you're scheduled, the citizen comments are beginning at the start of the meeting.
I'm fine with letting anyone speak who wants to.
I mean, if the commission doesn't mind, I just want to make sure. Okay. I guess we can always, I would just say, would somebody just make a motion, we go back into citizen comments?
I'm going to make a motion. You got to warn us here.
Okay. So we'll just go back into citizen comments. So go ahead, sir. And if you don't mind, when you come forward, folks, just state your name in this, and I only can do five minutes for you, for each person that speaks. I mean, you're not representing any one particular group, right? Like, all the people here, you're like a spokesperson for. The reason I'm asking is because when we do that, we, we only do the spokesperson who is going to speak, then we don't want everyone else coming up and saying the same thing for.
I'm for the fairness bill.
Okay, that's fine, but I just meant like.
I haven't discussed this with anyone else in the room.
Got you. All right, thanks. We're not trying to put you on the spot by asking all these questions.
No worries.
This is the way our rules are. All right, thank you, just state your name and.
Good afternoon, my name is Nikolai Pennington. I have a colleague that I work with frequently. He was in high school in the 1960s, and he frequently tells me of the story when he was out with some of his friends, one of which, one of which was a black boy. One Sunday morning, a pastor by dressed in their Sunday vest saw the boys together and said to my colleague and his other white friends, "How can you associate with that person and still call yourself a Christian?" Now, you can say those were old times, and times have changed, but these two will be old times someday, and we will look back and laugh with embarrassment at the imbecility and the unfairness of it all. I was raised in this town. I graduated from Franklin County High School in 1987. On a daily basis, I couldn't go from one class to the next without being called a fag or a queer. I was threatened with physical harm, and I was spit on. Teachers were no help, some of them left along with the students. It started in the seventh grade, imagine that, every day with no pause in between, every day at a curve. Now, as an adult, there is still a possibility of not being treated fairly in this town. Gays can possibly lose their jobs, they can lose or deny a home. Discrimination, discrimination, it's outright bigotry. Bigotry on the same level as racism. Tell me where the difference is. I'd like to remind everyone who's not already clear on this, being gay is not a choice. It's a naturally occurring variant like being right or left-handed. It's literally as simple as that. I can tell you that I was raised as a straight child. My parents told me that I was going to grow up, have a beautiful, have a beautiful wife, have children. Turned out that wasn't the case. I didn't realize it myself until I was sixteen years old. Other students in the school knew about me before I did, evidently. I know equality will come, just like it has for the blacks, just like it has for women, but I would like to show that we here in the capital city of Kentucky, we can be leaders in fairness rather than followers. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can, if you had your hand up, you can.
Can I also comment?
Can, oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. We, we, we're back in citizen comment.
My name's Melissa Calhoun. I just found out Friday night that there was a discussion today about a fairness ordinance, and that there was some controversy. I found out that the distinguished Reverend York was interested in speaking against.
And ma'am, can I just ask you one thing? We don't refer to, to our folks, like, speakers by name.
Oh.
We're not supposed, we don't refer to each other by name up here, you would call me, is this, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You can just say the previous speaker.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Um, I'd like to thank the speaker just before me for his courage.
Thanks.
Uh, okay, so basically, I'm supposed to speak as though I'm not.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
Okay.
I don't know if you're for or against, but.
But don't mention people's names.
Just don't refer to Reverend York by his first name as, from the podium.
Okay. So just comments that were made, okay. Um, I get, okay, so personally, I have a transgendered brother and a sister who is not heteronormative. And so being in a family that has adjusted to those developments in our lives, we've been very intimate with the difficulties that society at large place on people who have this lifestyle, whether they choose it or not. I would, I would like to say that I have many, many friends in Frankfurt that are not heteronormative, and many more friends who are, who do not have a problem with people who choose non-heteronormative lifestyles. And I am also a Christian with religious beliefs, and I have not found anywhere in the Bible that Jesus has even mentioned sexual practices anywhere. And I feel that we, as a city, could create a safer environment for people who, to use words that have already been used tonight, feel marginalized, for whatever reason. I also wanted to comment that you cannot tell the race of a person just because you see their face, and that race is just as ambiguous a category, and that I believe that this issue that we're talking about is very similar to the struggles that have been going on for a long time, that people are familiar with, and now, you know, that we have laws in place. I, I grew up in a place even farther south than here, where the, those types of issues are even more obvious than they are here. And I would just like to say that the, whether, I, because I'm not familiar with the language of the ordinance, I don't feel like I can speak about the specifics of whether or not it's worth it, but I would say that if one person's life could be saved, it would certainly be worth any effort that people are willing to make. And to say that that person's life is not worthy of our attention would not be a Christian statement, or a loving statement from any person of any belief. And as far as the logistics of actually being able to protect people or not, even if it is just a PR statement, I would be proud to live in a city that was willing to make the kinds of statements that are being discussed. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Commissioner Roach wanted me to clarify that we actually don't have a draft of an ordinance, so there's actually nothing already drafted before us, so there's really nothing for anybody to refer to. Is that what you're going to say?
Yes, sir, Mayor, and, and the one other thing, too, what, what, for the whole audience, there is no ordinance written, and, and the second thing is, is that we had a, we had a presentation in favor of having a fairness ordinance, and so we, we got somebody to come and give a con, so this is how this process has gone, so we've not written an ordinance or anything else.
Thank you. Come here.
I would like to speak.
Okay.
I really came here tonight.
Do you want to, like, they want you to state your name, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We know you, but I mean, just, we're.
Eunice Montfort, I'm from Frankfurt. I didn't come prepared to speak tonight, had no intention of speaking, but after listening to some of the things that have been shared, I feel like I want to, to speak. First of all, I, I want to say, as a previous speaker said, that no one here is speaking out of bitterness or hatred, or trying to minimize any other person. That's not the purpose of my speech, or I don't think anybody else who has spoken against this tonight. But I do think there's some issues that are involved. First of all, I want to say that I'm a human resources director, I, I deal with human resource laws every day. I deal with human resource laws every day. I deal with what is legal as far as discrimination is concerned every single day. There are already tons of laws on the books to protect anybody in any situation that's been described tonight. Now, if someone has been discriminated against in a school situation, there are certainly laws on the books already to deal with those situations. The last thing we need is another law that puts more rules and regulations on someone. We already have laws on the books that address those kinds of situations. Now, the fact that they may not be enforcing those laws is a totally different issue, but there are, I know, first thing, because I deal with human resource law every single day and have for years, there are adequate laws on the books right now to, to address any of the issues that have been dealt up. So that's one of the first things that I want to say. To just figure yourself that they have family and friends who are not heterosexual, so do I. I have family members, I have friends the same way. But I also have family members and friends who do a lot of other things that I may or may not agree with. Just because a person's behavior is, is something that's out there doesn't necessarily mean that it's the right thing, the moral thing, or even the legal thing to do. So simply because people choose a certain behavior, and I believe it is a choice, otherwise, you know, this, this was addressed before...
Let's all just, I know that some, sorry. Just want people to give our speaker respect while she's speaking. Thank you.
I'm a Christian. The Bible is my compass for everything. The Bible is absolutely clear on God's stand on homosexuality, whether you like it or you don't like it. The Bible is absolutely clear if you don't believe that. Look in the Book of Leviticus. You can look at the Book of Romans, Deuteronomy. It has clearly laid out what, what God's position is on homosexuality. His position is that it's sin. He doesn't make it any greater sin than tons of other sins: lying, cheating, gossip, a lot of the things, a number of us engage in every day, but it is nevertheless listed as a sin. And because that is the case, I've heard people several times make the statement that Jesus didn't address it. Well, I beg to differ. The Bible says that all Scripture is inspired by God. It is God-breathed. Therefore, every word, if it's God-breathed, from Genesis through the Book of Revelation, is applicable to whatever the situations are in our lives. To say that Jesus didn't directly speak to it is then saying that Scripture is not God-breathed because He is a part of the Godhead. So I have to disagree with that as well. But the bigger thing for me is that we already have laws on the books, but the second thing is that situations come up that absolutely put people with religious convictions in a corner. When things come up, Hobby Lobby is a prime example. There are a number of other situations that have been, the Chick-fil-A. There are a number of situations that have come up that absolutely backed businesses into a corner because of their religious convictions. That should not be the case. I have no desire whatsoever to see anyone discriminated against as far as housing, the normal things that we, each of us have access to. At the, okay, five minutes. At the same time, I think we have to look at the other side as well and respect religious convictions because that's a part of this issue as well.
Thank you. Just want to remind everybody, I know it's an issue for some folks that's really deeply rooted, and some people are not going to agree with some of the speakers, so just, if you all don't mind, just at least, whether you agree or disagree with whatever the speaker's saying, just at least give them your attention, and please, keep in mind that it's a tough issue or something. Sir, had his hand up, and then, back that one.
David. My name's Howard Bowman, and this is David Rayburn. We're members of the Franklin Baptist Association. I'm the Director of Missions, and he is our moderator. And I have a written statement. I'll give that to the clerk later, but I just briefly want to go over this. First of all, thank you for allowing us to speak. Appreciate that very much. Our association is 32 Southern Baptist churches here in Franklin County with over 11,000 members in those churches, and we just come and, and ask you and urge you not to pass this kind of legislation. We do, with all due respect to anyone, no matter what their beliefs are, we do not want to do anything against them, but we have a strong concern that these ordinances that are based around sexual orientation are also bringing hardship to those of very strong religious convictions as well. And so we find ourselves in a very, very difficult situation. Already, I know some situations have been cited. I know of one in New Mexico. A young lady was a photographer. A couple came to her, and it was a same-sex commitment ceremony, not a wedding, just a commitment ceremony, but she refused to do it because of her religious beliefs, and she ended up getting fined $7,000 for doing that. We have a situation right now in Lexington with a t-shirt company, and that's going to be a very, we don't know the outcome of that, obviously, but that in itself is going to be a very, very strong thing. And one, one of the things that we're concerned about is those people who do hold strong religious convictions, whatever denomination they want to call themselves, still, this is putting them in a very difficult situation. And we have many people, business people here in Frankfurt, who would be greatly adversely affected by this kind of ordinance, and, and we just strongly ask that you do that. You know, we are, our religious beliefs are protected by the United States Constitution, the Kentucky Constitution, and we just passed the Religious Liberty Law, and we're very concerned about that. And, and we just come to you tonight and, and ask that you take that into consideration. And, you know, we're not here tonight to be against anyone, to show hatred toward anyone, but we do have rights, too, and, and we ask that those be strongly considered. So we, we come to you tonight and ask you to, to not continue with this and not to pass any kind of fairness ordinances. All right. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is John Carlton, and I would like to express my support for the ordinance. I have a few comments to make on other speakers' comments tonight. Some of the qualities that are protected statuses that were mentioned as being inherent and obvious are not. We think that we can look at a woman who walks in the room, and we think that that's a woman. Well, we have, we have hermaphrodites. The new term is intersex. Someone may be perceived as being male or female, and that's not the case. Some people have both sex organs, and their mentality, and they have a right to self-identification. That's what being transgender is all about, regardless of whether you were born with certain sex organs or you have a certain DNA. Those people still have rights as well, and it's not to, it's not up to an employer or a landlord or any other person to be able to decide who you are. You have rights inherently, as nobody looking at me might be able to tell that I'm anything other than Anglo-Saxon or white. I do have other races in my background. Gender identity is, is a self-identification. You have a right to pick how you, how you live your life, whether you choose masculine characteristics, feminine characteristics. That's nobody's choice but yours. And another comment that was made was, just because one complaint in 10 years may be valid, does that mean that that person's complaint is not worthy of protection? That's why we have constitutions, federal, state, city ordinances, to protect people no matter how, no matter how small those items and complaints may come up. We have constitutions to prohibit majority or populations or things that are popular from inhibiting other people's freedoms. So I would like to also say that, yes, people do have choices. People do have rights, both religiously and otherwise. We don't legislate on religious, we don't always legislate on religious beliefs. Those religious beliefs can inspire people to vote certain ways, to think certain things, but we don't legislate just on religion. As I believe another speaker was, is Christian, then spoke tonight and identified as Christian, obviously, even within the Christian community, as well as in the Muslim community, and non-belief systems or other belief systems, people believe different things, and that's their right, and those beliefs are protected. But people should have rights to live places. They should be able to rent. They should be able to buy houses. They should be able to bank. They should be able to be employed, not based on what other, someone else's judgment of them. And businesses provide a public service. Religious institutions have their own protections, but individuals have rights to be able to be employed, to, like I said, live, have a place to live, shelter, food. You know, if you walk into a grocery store that, you know, is your neighborhood grocery store, should you be able to be denied buying food because of your sexual orientation? Obviously, no. You have certain rights to basic things, and shelter, food, employment, to be able to provide for yourself and your family, no matter how, how you define your family. You know, some people don't have families. Some people's families are their friends. Are we going to define what family is? Are we going to define what, you know, we should get out of definitions. I mean, the, the point is that we have constitutions that protect classes, no matter how, what the minority is, how often those situations occur, et cetera. So I would like to submit to you that passing the ordinance is the right thing to do, protect everybody. We already have certain constitutional laws and certain Supreme Court rulings, state and federal, that, that protect those rights. And I would just like to say that I believe this is the right thing to do, and I hope you agree. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm Sam Marcus. I hadn't really planned on speaking, but I think it's worthwhile to speak. I think it's unfortunate, but I believe that Frankfurt does need a fairness ordinance. I think we need fairness ordinances everywhere. It's unfortunate because there shouldn't be discrimination, but there is discrimination based on sexual orientation, and just as there once was discrimination based on race or based on gender. That's a fact. I don't think that this is a religious issue. Sexual orientation is not deviant. It's not illegal, and it is innate. I didn't choose to be born homosexual. I didn't choose to be born heterosexual. I'm heterosexual. I'm not homosexual. That wasn't a choice. That's just part of who I am, just as I didn't choose to be born Jewish, but I was born Jewish. I don't think that we always understand discrimination or we always recognize discrimination. Certainly, 30 and 40 years ago, we didn't recognize or realize that segregation was racial discrimination. I don't think this is material, materially different now, and yet, history will judge us someday, and the history will be clear that we either allowed discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender, or we decided to take a stand against it. And we can wait for history to make that determination and be behind it and follow those decisions, or Frankfurt can be a progressive community, which I think it normally is a progressive community, and get in front of this issue and settle it now. Certainly, the numbers don't matter. Discrimination is wrong and needs to be ended wherever it exists, whether there's one case or a thousand or a million. So I believe the time is right, and the City Commission would do well to enact a fairness ordinance. Thank you.
My name's Sam Dom. Like previous...
What?
Sam. Sam.
I didn't hear the last name.
Dom.
D-A.
U-M. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Like previous speakers... Can y'all hear me okay? Okay. Like previous speakers, I did not plan on speaking. In fact, I just found out about this and decided to come and, I guess, voice my thoughts now. Just going to touch on a few things that were said prior. Several of the, I guess, Christian-oriented speakers have said things along the lines of, "We're not here to show hatred. We're not here to discriminate. We're not here to do this, be against another group of people." But, but, my first thinking on that is, most of us who grew up in school were taught that, you know, "But" means forget everything before I just said. So on the one hand, you know, you say you're not here to do that, but on the other hand, that's exactly how people feel. The other thing is, I don't know if we're still in the Bible Belt, or if we're pretty close to the Bible Belt, but I was raised a Southern Baptist from Bellevue Baptist Church, from Dr. Adrian Rogers in Memphis, Tennessee. And my grandfather was a Baptist preacher. I was raised in the church. I became a Christian when I was seven years old. So I, I fully, I fully get it about the religious beliefs. And in this town, I'm guessing that we have, we far outnumber, Christians far outnumber the number of the LGBT in our community. So I kind of feel like it's an unfair comparison to, you know, let's look at the thousands and thousands of people in this community who have a religious voice about something that's basically nonreligious, housing, employment, against the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender community, which is going to be a far lesser number. In the end, I'm just kind of wondering why we don't get back to humanity and how people are treated. I feel like it's easy, and probably people before, the LGBT community, the African-American women, people have mentioned this before, you know, it's easy in this country for a white heterosexual male first, then heterosexual female, thankfully, to, you know, with the basic average appearance, their nose isn't too big, their ears aren't too big, you know, it's easy for them to stand up and say, and have, and have an opinion. It's easy for them to have an opinion, but they're not suffering the discrimination. They're not suffering the hurt. You don't know what it was like to walk down the hall and get spit on. You don't know. So the other thing that I would say is, as it relates to the Bible, if you go back to Leviticus, and you go back to what Paul said, and you go back to what Jesus said, if you study that historically and, and you compare what's been, what's been learned through archaeology and history, you will find that there are errors, and that the Christians do have errors in their beliefs, and they're understanding their interpretation. And we could spend all day long talking about the Leviticus laws, of which were for the Jews, not necessarily for the Christians, although I know they get merged together, but, you know, let's, you know, talk about shellfish, and you talk about shrimp, I mean, you know, you could just keep going about all the different things that we're not supposed to be doing anymore, or we're not supposed to be doing. And so, you know, what I would say is, you can only go so far, and as far as Jesus's words, that's one thing. But Paul's words were another thing. So I would just say that, you know, it's a little touchy when you start bringing in the Bible to, to talk about employment and, you know, a living situation. So I think that's about all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. This is my last question. I'm going to go ahead. 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 My name is Jane McCord. I have lived in Frankfurt nearly all of my life. I know I was born a lesbian, and I tried to hide it. I was compelled to hide it back in the fifties and sixties. It was just not acceptable, and I could not bring such shame to my family. So therefore, I lived the first half of my life trying to be someone I was not, and I believe that is the biggest sin I have ever committed. I do not understand why or how city government can be influenced by religious beliefs. Our nation is based on equality for all. Why are we doing this?
Thank you, ma'am.
The thing I think that bothers me, I'm sorry, Phyllis Vincent? What frustrates me, I think, the most about our, our times. Our government, our founders searched for three hundred, three hundred and fifty years. I mean, that process started in the fourteen hundreds. They tried all kinds of governments, they tried all kinds of things, and finally by the seventeen hundreds, they've established a constitution. And then it does say, there's equal protection for everybody. And it's been spoken that there are laws that address all these issues. But our founders were Christian, and if you read history, you know, you go back five hundred years, a thousand years, I mean, you will, if you read firsthand accounts of what George Washington felt, or Thomas Jefferson felt, or John Adams, you see the principles on which they founded our country. They struggled to find a medium between tyranny, where those few up there are telling all of us what to do, and anarchy, where we all do as we please. In my growing-up time, I guess, it's been, golly, very good, do you know? But I, I sense as an adult, we're moving toward anarchy. Everybody wants to do what they want to do, and they don't want anybody to think ill of them. And I'm not for discrimination or anything, I'm not talking, it's just, if, if our country is founded on a set of principles, and those set of principles were good from the seventeen hundreds, say, to the mid nineteen hundreds or two thousands, and that we weren't perfect, and we made a lot of mistakes, and we've outgrown those. But I wonder how far we can bend the principles on which we founded, and we still remain When, when do we lose the balance between tyranny and anarchy? And there are a lot of issues. This one you speak to tonight may be one of them, but there are a lot of issues that go into that. And I beg you to look at the big picture. What makes Frankfurt a healthy community? That you would choose to raise your children? That they're free to be out in the neighborhood without fear? And I believe we're, we're begging at, at an issue that is just one of many things. And laws and more laws don't change human behavior. And it's human behavior that we're talking about. If I get nasty with Tommy because he's black, or I get nasty with one of these young people because they are homosexual, that's human behavior. And you could pass twenty-nine laws, and you're not gonna change the heart of the people who are discriminating. I beg you to look at the big picture. What are the principles on which we were founded? And how can we get back toward those that were successful for our country for so many Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I don't envy, my name's Towne Tropez. I pastor the Hillcrest Baptist Church in Frankfurt, and I don't envy your all's position at all, where you are, or what you're looking at, because there are strong feelings on both sides of the issue. The only point that I wanted to make was this, and it was alluded to by a previous speaker, that the problem with an ordinance of this kind is, while it seeks to address one kind of discrimination, it is often used as a vehicle to chill the right of another group, another protected group, a group of Christians, to practice their faith the way they want to practice their faith, free of discrimination. It uses the power of the government to censor a Christian from practicing, practicing his or her faith in an appropriate fashion. And that's the only point that I make. It seeks to protect one thing, but it turns around and discriminates against another group of people. And that's, that is the concern that I have with an ordinance of this kind. And that's the only point that I wanted to make.
Thank you so much. Is there any bells? Okay, go ahead.
Gary Hager. I pastor Westview Baptist Church, and I know that people that are here today in this room are hurting. Everyone in here is hurting. And I think that, I think of the scripture of John 3:16, where it says, "For God so loved the world, that he gave his only-begotten son, that whosoever believeth in him should not perish but have everlasting life." And I think it's God's love. I think that God loves all of us, and I'm glad that God does not discriminate against anyone. And God chooses to love us. He loves, he loves us unconditionally. There's no conditions that he places his love upon us. And I know that people who choose to live different lifestyles, that's, that's their choice that they make. I know that there are those that choose the opposite to do that, and that's their choice that they make. I know that this, that God loves us, God cares for us, and God does not want us to spread hate and bigotry toward one another. We can never, ever accomplish anything by being divided, but we can accomplish things by being united. And I believe that under God, and under the leadership that he displays through his Son, Jesus Christ, we can find the unity through him that is so desperately needed in individuals' lives. And I, I, I have got friends that are homosexual, lesbian. I love them, I do not try to run them down. I try to listen to their hurt and their, the needs that they have, and I try the very best I can to minister to them, but I, I just think it's wrong when we are at each other's throats, on both sides of it. When we are at each other's throats, we are not ever going to accomplish anything. And I believe the best thing, from my perspective, when you don't know what to do, don't do anything. Let it go. Let us learn to love one another, let us learn to try and understand one another, and, and just don't do it. That's all I've been saying.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Bob Paget. I am so proud. Every once in a while, just this burst of Americana pride overcomes me, and I, I'm not often going for it a lot of times and criticizing the stuff, but that, you know, you take a big America and all the things going on on a Monday night across the place, and here we are in a small town, a small government hearing, in a small place, and people who really disagree with each other are standing in here and saying relatively calm and civil things about it. And it is, it is just amazing. You look at what happened in the election in Pakistan, just recently, and things, people getting slaughtered in the streets. I am so proud. Let's start with that. Couple of things to consider along the way. I am so proud of Ameri, to be here and be a part of America, but I am also the, proud to be the quintessential example of what government protects. I consider myself one of the last minorities who's able to be discriminated against at will, because I have to put up with it all the time. It's in buildings, it's in my pocket, on my money, it's everywhere. I'm an atheist. It all doesn't matter to me, all the religious arguments and the moral arguments, I'm an atheist. Government is here to protect my rights, too. I'm actually technically what they would call militant agnostic. That means I don't know, and you don't either. So as I would stand here and tell you, I defend absolutely every right of churches to decide who's their membership, to meet when they want to meet, where they want to meet, how they want to meet, do all these things, and I would die defending the Constitution and protecting it. Also, on the same hand, I would also say that the government has every right to not have its laws dictated by, by religion, or preachers, or anything else. It is here for the common good of all people in its citizenry, and I would die for the right to protect that as well. I don't want to change anybody's hearts, I don't think I can. I've been to a lot of protests across the nation over the years, I've done clinic escorting, I've done, I've been told creatively how to go to, to go to hell by more good-meaning people than you can shake and stick at. I'm not gonna change anybody's heart, I just want to end the discrimination. So I would counsel everybody to keep in mind that it is a government function to protect the rights of all citizens, and that's what we're here to do, is talk about a government function, and that we have to set aside those things. If you can set them aside to fit in my little mold of atheism or agnosticism, then it's probably meeting the right agenda items to protect us all. And as a final, just to throw out, I couldn't help it, thought about it, you know, talk about the founding fathers and everything, Jefferson scoffed at John 3:16, he didn't think that Christ was the Son of God. He liked all of the great things that he preached on a level that to get along as a community, don't kill each other, don't steal from each other, don't covet each other. That was what was important. The rest was to your own choices. Government stays in their spot, religion stays in their spot, and we'll see that it all works out. But I'm so proud of y'all, thank you.
Okay, anyone else that has not previously spoken?
My name's Lewis McLean, right here in Frankfurt. I'm off a suggestion, because I have the same understanding as the other young lady about when you go through a process and you put a "but" or an "if" in it. So I'm not gonna do that. What I'm gonna tell you is, is that make a suggestion, and that suggestion is, obviously there's a lot of people speaking out for and against, and having their own opinion on this. If you want to get the true result of what this community feels, then put it on a ballot and let them vote for it. It takes it out of your all's hands, and we have the courtesy and the right to pull the curtain, vote as we see fit, and it doesn't discriminate against anyone. So if you believe in it strongly, fine, if you believe against it, fine, put it on a ballot. Let it pass or fail on its own accord. That way, there is no discrimination against anyone and my ability to vote. Thank you.
Anyone else that has not spoken? Okay, well, thank you all for being respectful of each other. We appreciate hearing all the different views, that's what it's all about. I just ask commissioners, do you have any comments or thoughts?
I had, I had hoped we wouldn't deal with this. Like the last speaker, I think it's gone well, and it's a great place for people to come and give their opinions on things, but I'd hoped we wouldn't deal with it, really, because of what happened tonight. I think it's a divisive topic, I think it's a topic the city should not deal with, and even though I'm against the fairness ordinance, I heard just as many arguments tonight against it that didn't have quite the right, or a differing view than I would have, as I did on the fore. There is a whole host of arguments, pro and con, and I just think that this is not a function for what the city needs to do. And by the way, on the term discrimination, there, we do have the right to discriminate based on gender identity. It is not a protected class under the US Constitution or the state constitution. In fact, the state constitution, the, the recent law passed at the state level in General Assembly said that you could not discriminate, in a broad sense, against religious freedom. So I think this thing just is a tough issue, because if, if you in fact enact it and you don't allow discrimination, you're gonna discriminate against a Christian business owner, or you're gonna discriminate against a, a Christian housing, or you're going to be like it is, where somebody said that they didn't want to make a cake, or, excuse me, they didn't want to do the flowers for, for a ceremony between two homosexuals, and so as a result, they were fined. So I, I think there's just too much divisiveness on this issue. The city doesn't need to deal with it, and we need to just kill it.
Now, of course, from my point of view, this is very important, but at the same time, I believe that we always should do things logically and in order, and it's one of those things that, we have a lot of goals, had about fifty, and this was one of them, and it had not reached the point that it was gonna be one of the first things we got into when we got into office. It, it, it's not, doesn't make it any less important, it's just we have some things that are urgent. You know, things can be important but not urgent. The budget is urgent, you know, deadlines are coming up quick. Seeing the different comments here, I think it needs to simmer. You know, you know, in the military, we always learn that we always have time, you know, never have time to do it right, but we always have time to do it over. I don't want us to have to do it over. I, I want it to rest, for the people to pray, pray on it, for the ones that don't talk to somebody about it and, and make sure that this is really best for Frankfurt. You know, I didn't know this was a problem. Had I known it was a problem, it would have been, it might have been a higher one in my category. I have gay friends, you know, I don't have, I don't know the transgender thing, I'm not aware of. I've read about it, but I just don't know anybody. And I don't wanna, you know, I'm certainly looking for a vote of something that I don't, haven't seen as a problem yet. Otherwise, I've, I've got a lot of problems that I've been told is happening in Frankfurt. This one just has not risen to that level yet, but I'm glad to hear the different comments just to see, you know, what Frankfurt is, because I think it is a beautiful place. I, I think we do take the lead on things, but we take the lead because we hit the things that, that are important to a lot of people, not necessarily the majority, but a lot of people. That means it affects us all. That's why we've been trying to tweak the trash system to get it off the radar, because it affected so many people, that's all we heard about. You know, that one, you know, had to be killed, but the other things, we're going right down the line and trying to take every, so we really needed to hear this from the community, because, you know, I'm glad there was a large turnout, because the people I've ran into, it's going fifty-fifty, you know, against and for. And, but when I ask them, you know, okay, why are you against, why are you for, I also get different reasons. I just think it's not something that we have to deal with right away just to get it done, because either way, it could be because either way, it could be problematic. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, can you have your hand up?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe, Mr. Moore, that you once said, for $160, anybody can sue anybody for anything.
Close to that, ma'am.
And, and when we, when we look at an ordinance that we set up, you know, you, you have a board that's ever-changing, so we can set an ordinance, and it could be set in place, not to say in 18 months, a new commission comes in and they just, oh, they can get rid of it. So, to say we're, we're setting, we're setting law of the land and within our city, it's hard to say, because it, it's ever-changing. One thing I would like to see done more than a fairness ordinance is, I have a copy here, I was going to get a copy for Eric, for all of the commissioners, clear your box. The City of Murray passed a, a anti-bullying resolution in January 2013, which I find more than a fairness ordinance, that bullying seems to be an issue that impacts a lot of our lives more than, than anything. Trauma that, that happened to us verbally and mentally lives with us forever, and if there's not support to pass a fairness ordinance, I would like to see us go for at least a bully-free resolution. I don't know where the rest of the commission stands, if, if we want to take this discussion on to next month, see if we want to try to draft anything up. If, do we need a human rights commission within our city in order to, to get this done? I mean, I think there's still some, some issues we still need to look at that, that haven't looked at. Do you guys know if we need a human rights commission within the City of Franklin or Franklin County?
Do I?
You do not have to have a human rights commission in the City of Frankfurt.
Okay.
It depends on how the ordinance is drafted. If there were a fairness ordinance, you know, it can take, of course, different permutations, and you would not have to have a human rights commission. When the appropriate time comes, I could certainly talk, provide you all some additional information on the human rights commission and the cost to implement a human rights commission, the fact that we have a human rights commission statewide already up in Louisville, that's, their specific mission is to address human rights complaints, and they're fully staffed and well-funded, and I've represented clients before that commission to do a good job. So, when you all want to address that, certainly I could address that.
Answer your question.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the idea is, is we need to know as a commission, do, do we discuss this item any further, or do we not?
Is it on our priority list?
I think it was on our list, and I don't know for individuals where it was, I mean, I'm willing to certainly discuss it.
I mean, it's here right in front of us right now, not to say that's not a priority, but...
I'll just say that, I mean, I don't think any of us like bullies, we don't like to be bullied, and I think a lot of us have experienced that in school. Bullying is a strategy that one learns early on, in the very early years, to help one survive one's circumstances, and so if we're going to address bullying, I guess my question is, where are the teeth that we're going to use behind it? Because in order to eliminate bullying, we have to teach parenting skills, and we have to teach mothers and fathers how to attach to their infants, and that's how we eliminate the strategy. So it's, I think we could do a proclamation or whatever, but we can't eliminate it unless we eliminate the people that bully, and we can't do that, because those are the strategies that they have learned in order to survive their circumstances, and if we don't give people new strategies, then basically, we've got a problem. So, I don't have a problem with a proclamation, but I guess it's, it's basically saying, we don't like bullying, and we don't, and none of us do, but the bigger problem is, we've got a society full of people that don't really know how to do good parenting, and that's way beyond what this commission can actually do, except to encourage education and encourage people, and we do, we need better education, better parenting, better parenting programs. And I wasn't going to speak to the fairness ordinance, because I'm afraid you all don't have enough time tonight, but if you don't mind, I would like to tell you my thoughts on it, because I think we really do need to, somebody suggested, sit back and let it simmer, and see what we want to do with it, and if you're sure you don't mind my long wind, do I have five minutes, ma'am?
You certainly do, Commissioner.
You cannot make something that by its very nature is unfair, fair, you can never do it. Life is not fair, life is not going to be fair. The best we can do is make sure that the inequity is equi- to be equitably distributed. We're never going to make people stop discriminating. If I pick out two people in this room, that I don't know, and decide which one I want to live in my house that I'm getting ready to sell next door, which I'm just making that up, but there was a point at which I had a house next door to sell, how did I decide who I sold it to? How did I decide? Well, I decided because I took the one that would give me more money, but let's pretend they both wanted to give me the same amount of money. I'm going to discriminate, it's in our nature to discriminate. How I discriminate is different than the way the mayor discriminates, or Commissioner Haddon, or Commissioner Haynes, or Commissioner Roach, and most of the time, we don't even know on what basis we're discriminating. I know I don't. And let me just say, I have lots of gay lesbian friends, asexual friends, people that don't quite know what they are or what they think, and I'll tell you, as a psychologist, it's not a choice, your orientation is not a choice, your behavior is. I'm heterosexual, who basically, I think, has become asexual, and I choose to be asexual at this time, and the behavior's a choice, the orientation is not. It's biological, it's neurological, and so I think we need to stop judging people based on confusing who people are with the behaviors that they do. I personally don't care what people do with their sex lives, the lungs in the bedroom, not City Hall. But the question here tonight is, do we need an ordinance? And I look around Frankfurt, and I don't see that, what is it, the LBGTA, whatever, all those people are any more discriminated against than single white females with no children, or young black men with lots of girlfriends, or whatever, we all think...
She doesn't know it's not me.
We all think...
You're not young.
She said young.
I asked for that.
Well, my point is, I think we all feel like we come from the group that is so badly discriminated against. I know I have felt it in my 40s as a single white female with no children, okay? I know that I've heard middle-aged white men say, "We have now become the most discriminated group, people most discriminated against." I've heard it from, you know, green people, I've never seen green people, but we all feel discriminated against, it's a fact of life, because we are discriminated against. And my thing is, if you're discriminated against on this street, move on down to the next street, because that's where they want you. We live in a country where we have the right to pursue employment, we have the right to pursue a place to live, and I think that that's important, that we keep that right, but I think it's important that we don't violate the rights of other people. I don't want anybody telling me who I have to rent to, or who I have to employ. If I did discriminate, it would not be based on somebody's sexual orientation, because quite frankly, I don't know, want to know what that is, I don't care. That's not something I'm going to ask in an interview, and it's probably not something somebody's going to tell me. And so, I'm going to discriminate based on other things, and let me tell you, probably based on my one woman standing back, looking at it, opinion, the most discriminated group in this country are fat people, BMIs over 25 or 26. I've heard it, I've heard employers talk about, "I'm not going to hire this person that's overweight." So if we're going to do an ordinance, let's not limit it to LBGTA, whatever it all is, let's do an ordinance that talks about, "We are not going to tolerate discrimination in employment based on anything but the ability to perform the task of the job." And now, let me back that up and say, how are you going to, how are you going to show that? There is no instrument out there, no instrument that I'm aware of, and I'm a psychologist that did testing for a lot of years, that will show us that we have not discriminated based on anything but the ability to do the job, because we can never get inside somebody's head. So I would just say, have an ordinance, have not an ordinance, quite frankly, I don't care, because I think Frankfurt is a place where we're all discriminated against rather equally, okay? We've all in this room experienced it, based on something we are. Let's get over it. Life is not fair, we're not going to make life fair with an ordinance. Let's try to like, be considerate of other people, and try to be aware of what's going on in our heads when we do discriminate, and why are we doing that, and are we doing it for the right reason? So, I would just ask the city solicitor, that if you do draft an ordinance, could we please make it much more encompassing than LGTBA, asexual, whatever? Could we have it based on, we don't want to discriminate, we don't want to do anything except look at employment situations in terms of the ability to do the job? Now, I don't know how you're going to solve the problem of renting or selling to people, I mean, how can you even prove how somebody discriminates, or on what basis a person discriminates? You cannot do it, because we're all doing it every day, and so, I said what I meant not to say. But let me just say one more thing, one more thing. I have many good friends that are lesbian and gay. Many people have thought that I am lesbian. I don't know what I am, I'm just asexual at the moment, it's nobody's business, but since we're talking about sex in City Hall, all right. Here's the thing, my friends that are in that group, they call it a community, why do we call it the LGTB community? Why can't we just talk about us all as one? But my friends, my very, very good friends, that identify as lesbian and gay, tell me that they're embarrassed by all of this conversation. They don't think it's anybody's business. They don't go to their employment situation and advertise their sexuality, and they don't go go and interview and, and make that a part of the process, and they've never been discriminated against in housing. Now, that's not to say that it doesn't happen, because I know it does happen, but I also know that overweight people experience it probably far more than people that have a sexual orientation different from somebody else. So I'm just saying, let's not make it about one group, because we're all discriminated against, and it's not going to end until Mr. Hager, Jesus Christ, comes back, and it's going to be like this until that happens, or if you don't believe in Jesus Christ, until the world blows up in devolution, or whatever, but whatever. Okay, that's what I had to say. I'm sorry I took so much of your time, but I was sitting there thinking, there is just way too much to say. But we have the right to pursue, but do we have the right to force what we want down somebody else's throat? And no, I don't think that we do. I don't ever want to tell an employer how they cannot discriminate, and I don't ever want to tell somebody that's renting an apartment who they have to let live in their apartment. I don't ever want to do that, because...
No, that's a black person.
Yes.
Hey, folks.
Why are the blacks, like, or females?
Folks, I know you all are concerned about it, but...
I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to get all fired up, but, but, but you see, when you're sitting up here and you have to think about these ordinances, you've got to think, okay, what's the other group that we left out? For a long time, for a good decade, I really thought that single white females were the group, were the ones that are just most discriminated against. We don't get invited to parties when the married couples have parties, because we don't have spouses, and somebody thinks we're going to steal theirs, or whatever. So, you know, we all experience that, there's nobody free from it.
Right, and we're set the precedent.
Okay, so...
Hey, folks.
But, ma'am, may I ask the solicitor, that if this board does decide to do that, could you draft that ordinance so that it goes beyond just specific classes, so that it really is based on, we're going to try to not discriminate on something that doesn't, should not be in the process of the decision-making, so that it includes everyone?
I think that an ordinance along those lines would be unenforceable, and so, if, if the commission is leaning in that direction...
That's my point.
I think a resolution would be better, saying that you believe people shouldn't discriminate against other people on whatever basis, but to say you shouldn't discriminate for any reason, that would be totally unenforceable.
Mayor, thank you, Mr. Moore, because that was actually the point I was trying to make. I believe somebody over here talked about, we have laws on books, we have all kinds of laws, and somebody over here talked about, the problem with ordinances and laws and actions and all of these things that we do, we can have all the laws that you want, but the problem is enforcement. We have noise ordinances right now, noise ordinances right now, that are not enforced, and I'll just tell you, last weekend, people come out on their decks at 12:30, midnight, and have children, toddlers out until 5:30 AM, and I've got to go to work the next morning, and it took three hours to, you know, a year ago, to get the police department to be able to catch them, okay? So, we have situations now where we have laws on books, ordinances, that we have a problem enforcing, and that's when there's something that's tangible, that you can hear, see, touch, feel. You can't hear, see, touch, feel what goes on inside people's heads when they make decisions. You can't do it. So, Mr. Moore, thank you, but that was my next point, we cannot enforce it. So why do we want to have things we can't enforce? I think we just need to learn to be more tolerant and examine why we make the decisions we make, what is it based on, and, but if we are going to have an ordinance, I could not vote for an ordinance that would add one class to the protected group, because there are more classes out there that are too busy getting about life to sit down and cry about how discriminated they are. Okay, that's enough. Sorry.
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Roach.
I'm going to be real fast.
Unlock me.
No, no, I, I talk too much, don't worry about you. The, it looks like we've, we've heard simmer, not deal with it, and maybe deal with it in a different way. The only question I have is, what do we want to do? Because I, and if it's just let it simmer, I'm fine with that. I'd prefer to, as I've said already, I'd prefer to just drop it, I don't think this is a proper function for city government, period.
The industry is emboldened by indifference.
Anyway, I got thrown off air, but the point being that I think, I think we just need to drop it.
This is not a voting meeting, so I wasn't prepared for any, to make decisions. I think I've heard all the different ways, I'm, I'm still on the simmering.
I just, I don't want to do anything that's going to narrow, that's going to create an ordinance that is so narrow, that it just makes, gives special privileges to some people and not to all of us. And right now, as I look around Frankfurt, I think we have a community where people get along. I don't see, I don't see like, a lot of people hating each other because of things like their race, or their age, or their gender, or their sexual orientation, or any of those things, and I think it's because we have a good community.
Do you have it? Any other commissioners? I want to, just, one of the things I want to look at, our, our laws right now on, excuse me, in our chapter 96 of our Fair Housing Code, it says, "City of Frankfurt ordinances, fair housing ordinances, chapter 96 of the code, prohibit discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, disability status. Generally applies to sale or rental of houses, real estate financing, and real estate brokerage. Narrow than draft fairness ordinance, which applies to most commercial activity." And of course, the solicitor had said that his, the research city had done, said that federal statutes do not address discrimination on the basis of sexual ordinance or gender identity, but it says further research can be done if necessary. I guess the question is, does the majority of the commission want to have the solicitor do further research, which, I guess the question is, there's already these protected, Commissioner, I think to answer your question, there already are several classes protected under this current ordinance. I think some just want to know, can we add the items that we discussed tonight, should that be added?
against become so discriminated against because they don't have a case for a lawsuit while everybody else does. So...
Like what?
Idiots. Short people, black people.
Okay. There you go. I just...
So, I just have a, so we can get on, our procedural level, what I still, as we've been talking here, it still seems to me that, I know we don't vote, but I think the questions are, do we simmer and discuss this at a later time? Do we just decide now that it's dead? Or, I think that's kind of where we are. Or do we have further just broad discussion again? And that would be part of simmering.
Well, Commissioner Roach, I think, Commissioner, Commissioner Mayor, can I just answer your question? I think, I think that, you know, I don't want to end up in 10, 12 months trying to figure out what we're going to do because the public's here tonight, and by the way, thank you all for your comments. I mean, I listened to all of them, and I got to say, I probably agreed with every single comment that I heard here tonight on both sides of the issue. So, what that tells me is, we've created something divisive that doesn't need to be divisive. And the answer to your question is, I think tonight is a good time for this body to decide if we want to do something with it or not, so we don't string the public along, so we don't worry when it's coming back. Because to be quite frank with you, I don't think that any of the five of us, and I don't know for sure, but I don't think any of the five of us is just jumping up and down to deal with this. Because it's a divisive issue, and we have serious problems, not only in Frankfurt, but we've got serious problems across the state and across the country. We've got serious problems, I'm telling you, we do. We've got young people that are not being brought up the way that, well, I think they should be brought up. We are not teaching values, okay? We're not teaching values, and this is an issue that I think is important to everyone, but I'm not sure everyone knows exactly what we need to do about it. So, I think we need to decide tonight, Mayor. Commissioner, Commissioner, I think, we need to decide tonight, do we want to do something? Do we want to say, we're not going to do anything and just not string anybody along any longer? That's what I think.
So, is there support to have the solicitor draft an ordinance for further review?
I support that, and, at least because the issue moved in, moved in further. You know, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. In the realm of all things, anybody can sue anybody for anything. If you don't agree with it, get an attorney yourself, represent yourself, take it to court, and businesses are protected as ourselves, and if you have the right to make a good case wherever you go. But I do support making sure that all people are created equal and served, so yes.
I'm fine with him drafting an ordinance. I'm going to tell you, if it's limited to that one, that one group, I will not vote for it. It's got to be, it's got to...
Be broad.
It's got to be broad. It's got to be broad for overweight people, for any kind of people that think they might be discriminated against, that's virtually all of us. So, it's got to be worded so that we can be fair. It's all about fairness, which life is not fair, but if we're going to try to, you know, distribute the inequity equitably, it's got to be written that way. And it's got to be something that we have a clue about enforcing, which is what I doubt we can. We cannot enforce some ordinances that we have now that are based on what we can hear, see, think, feel, you know, we can touch it, we can see it, and we can hear it, and we still can't enforce it. So, it's going to be a problem if we pass this ordinance. It's going to be a problem, and it's going to create divisiveness. And, but I've just got to say, I think this room's been, probably I've been the most heated person in here because that tells you how torn up I am about it, but you guys have been great. You guys have been presenting us your ideas, and people have not really gotten very argumentative. So, I just want to thank the people for coming tonight, and, you know, I heard, I heard things I agreed with on both sides. But I won't vote for something if it's not all-inclusive, I won't vote for one little, one little group of people, I'll vote for everybody. But that's, that's what I'm telling you now. So, if it's going to be drafted and you want my vote, then it's got to include more than one group of people.
Okay, not at this time, I think it would be a waste of time for us to have him draft something, and we are still toing. I've heard the two words divisiveness and unity. If you don't have, you know, if we don't know where we're going there, drafting something is not going to get it. So, I'm thinking, you know, if you don't want it to simmer, then it needs to come off until it becomes one of those urgent issues, that it's going to be best for Frankfurt. So, we don't just keep dragging people along, and we're calling it a if, you know, if then else. Now, I'm sure nobody wants discrimination to happen to anybody, and nobody knows that more than me, because everybody has a story. Nobody knows mine, and I don't know yours. Everybody has one. But at the same time, an ordinance was not the thing that got me out of some of the situations that happened in the past. It was people. And hopefully, some of the people here that seem to be of genuine minds, because as somebody stated, you can't read a person's heart. But it's one of those, I agree with everybody who said, you know, we should love one another because that's the part that is going to transend over it all. This piece of paper is not going to do it. And I can't see it this time, they're asking to draft an ordinance that we already know if it doesn't meet certain criteria, you know, it's not voteable on, it doesn't cover everything, and I just, I don't know, I'm uncomfortable. I feel like I was elected to represent all people, and I'm going to do that regardless of what ordinance. I do like the idea of a, not petition, proclamation, right, resolution, you know, something of nature, because I think that brings it out into the public. Because that's what happens, when you actually make this item something that's discussable, you actually can truly come to a solution. Because you bring people that don't think alike together. Otherwise, you know, everybody's just going to think their own way, you're not going to change them, but if it's on the table, you got a good chance, you know, make a positive move in the right direction.
I'm for not writing a resolution, and everybody's given a lot of good arguments, so there's no point in me saying very much about it. The only thing I would ask is my colleague, Commissioner Bowers, it's, if that's the standard of what the resolution is you need to support, then I would ask that you maybe reconsider, only because we know that standard can't be met.
That's what our attorney tells us, that standard cannot be met.
It'd be, not only, not only is it unenforceable, I believe our attorney would tell us it'd be unconstitutional as well.
The main problem, it'd be very difficult to draft. But on a serious note, you know, if you are trying to, what you would do, I guess you would say, discrimination in the city of Frankfurt is outlawed.
And then how are we going to enforce it? That's the problem. So...
Somebody filed a complaint. Did they finish that?
I think the best that we can do is, you know, we just need to set the right example, and leaders need to set the example, and it needs to filter down, and we need to start teaching values to our young people, and we need to stop teaching hate, and we need to start teaching tolerance and consideration, and treat each other like human beings. And I was teased in school too, and I still have not figured out on what basis I was taunted in middle school years. And I can't say that it was because I was this or that, because I don't know. But, but what I'm saying is, we need to teach our, we need to teach our children from day one, back to the bullying thing. We need, we need to do some education. But if he, I mean, I can reconsider and say, let's not do it, but I wouldn't mind having an all-inclusive one if our solicitor will take the challenge and make a miracle happen. But the thing is, I think the public wants a miracle to happen. Because the very idea of a fairness ordinance is, as I started out with my rambling before, saying that you want to make something that is by virtue of its very existence not fair, you want to take it and make it fair, and you can't do it. It starts here, it starts individually. You can't do it by law or ordinance. So, do you want me to say yes or no, Mr. Solicitor? Because I'll know if it's just very, one little class added.
That is not my call to make, thank you.
Why don't you draft it, and, you know, it'll, we can see what it looks like. We can't really decide what we want to do if we're not looking at what it is we're talking about voting upon, so draft it.
I would really need to have the support of three commissioners in order to draft an ordinance which...
What is it, Mayor?
Outlaws discrimination based upon type of clothes you wear, whether you wear glasses, whether you're too short, whether you're too tall, that would be, I would need to have three people, three of the commission indicate that they want to see that.
And you want specifics? Here's, here's the thing I want to say, folks. Before this law was passed by the city in Chapter 96, we didn't have anything that said anything about protection for folks being discriminated against because of their race, their color, their religion, their national origin, their sex, familial status, or disability status. So, I think to add the class of folks that, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, transgender class is the right thing to do. But if, if it's not going to be three commissioners who are going to support that, I think what the rest of the commission is saying is, it's just a futile point for the solicitor to try to draft something that we're not going to, he knows it's going to fail anyway.
If somebody can just answer my question. I really, see, I really take this seriously because we've spent how many hours here talking about this?
Hey, folks.
It's kind of funny to me that we are talking about something that I'm not sure we can enforce, and I'm sorry if I offended you, but...
You did.
The only people that are not presently covered are the gay people. We have covered race in our, in our, to prevent discrimination. We've, we have made point to prevent discrimination against religion, which is also very, very important. The only thing that's missing right now are the gay people.
Okay.
Anything else that you may have a question with will be covered by the Disabilities Act.
Okay, that was what I wanted to, I didn't want to know that, because that's a problem. But back to the, back to the overweight, so somebody's overweight just because they like to be that way rather than too skinny, are they covered? They don't have a medical problem, they don't have a medical issue, they don't have a disability on, on file.
There's some, if they apply for a job, for example, it may be a safety regulation that would prevent them from getting hired.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about if there's no, if there's no real reason, but that you just don't let bad people...
It is not, just like you know that it's not a choice for gays to be the way they are, for a person to be overweight, that is their choice unless it is a medical condition.
I guess...
So, what I'm, what I'm saying is, we're looking to protect a class of people that don't have a choice in the matter, like it's not a choice to be black, it's not a choice to be Jewish, it's not a choice to be gay.
I don't think my issue is with choice at all. I don't think that choice enters into...
Just make one, we're, we're doing too, too much argument to do testimony back and forth. So, do you have any further questions?
I was just going to say, for me, it was never about, choice never enters into the equation when I decide what I'm going to do with this. I mean, everybody's life.
And you made that clear as well. I just mentioned that because I do think that being overweight is a choice, unless it's a medical issue.
Let's move on to the next, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Does anyone else have a question for me?
No, but I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because Commissioner Roach wanted to say something.
Commissioner Hedin can go.
Well, I'm just, just from that point, I just want clarification, then, looking at the, is it 90?
Our ordinance?
Yeah.
Chapter 96.
That we would just add, just add out, add a line to that versus drafting an entire fairness ordinance, that we could just add a line to cover gay, lesbian, transgender, or...
Is that a question for me?
Yes, sir.
The, of course, the ordinance that the mayor referred to is the fair housing ordinance.
Okay.
And that ordinance is far narrower than the ordinance proposed or provided by the gentleman in the seat back there, I apologize, I can't call your name now. But that ordinance is far narrower, and the fair housing ordinance that was passed by the city protects the groups of people that are generally protected by federal law. So, our ordinance is similar to federal law in who it protects, and if it would be helpful, I've got a little handout y'all can look at, at your leisure, that just tells you what Kentucky law does, city of Frankfurt's fair housing ordinance, and then, and then the federal law, if that would be helpful.
Commissioners, don't have, you don't have to make decisions like, if you don't want to, we can, you can certainly pass over it, or you can make a decision to move forward.
I think you have three, I think you have three votes for him to draft it. I'm just not sure how I'm going to vote, but, and it doesn't mean that, you know, I am a Southern Baptist Christian, and I don't think that God thinks that gay, lesbian people are any more sinful than I am. There are, there's homosexuality all throughout the animal kingdom, always has been, always will be, and God's the creator of all that. So, it's not based on, if I vote, no, it won't be based on any religious conviction that I have, and I believe that my faith is as sound as anyone in this room, so my decision won't be based on anything to do with religion, because I think religion and government need to be completely separate. When we go to vote, it'll be based on fairness, and how fair can the fairness ordinance be? So, but if, I think we should draft it so we have something to look at, so the next time we gather, we'll know exactly what we're talking about.
If there's no objects, can we let Commissioner, we'll let Commissioner Roach have the last word tonight, and then we'll move on to the...
It'll be showtime. Commissioner Roach? I'm a little, if we've got three to draft something, by all means, draft it. I'm still awful puzzled by what he's going to draft, and I bet he is too, by the way. But are we drafting something narrow, or are we drafting something broad, since it looks like we didn't vote on either, we didn't, we didn't set, set out those specifications? So, that would be one question I have. The second question I would ask the city solicitor is, we need to make sure that whatever we draft will comply with recent General Assembly laws and various other things, because I think that, I think that we're entering into something that is going to create litigation. We're already seeing it started in Lexington, and I think it will spread here and create division. So, I would want whatever was drafted to do the best possible job so that we do not have a lot of litigation, and I'm not sure that's possible. So, I still don't know what we voted on.
I would like some clarification, and perhaps Commissioner Bowers is the best one to give it to me at that, at this point, and that is, am I to restrict the ordinance to the LGBT language, or am I to include obesity, height?
I would like, I would like it to be, not to spell any of those out, but just to make it so broad that anybody that wants to come forth and says that they're the new group will already be covered, so we don't have to do this every three years when a new group thinks that it's more special than anybody else.
Then I would need to ask the commissioners who are in favor of drafting the ordinance, if that's what they want me to do as well. Because right now, we have three positions. We have two commissioners who want the ordinance amended so they can review it, and to add lesbians, gays, and transgenders, I believe, so that's one group. Then we have one group who doesn't want to do anything, and then we have one group that wants to prohibit discrimination against anyone. And so, those are three different things. And I'm looking for guidance from the commission.
Okay, well, go. Do you want to have a first here with you? For me, I was, I was for the language similar to what Covington, Lexington, Louisville had for LGBT, but I'll defer to Commissioner Hedin as well to see what she wants. I don't know that we can deal with a broad discrimination ordinance, we should... We should already have some things in place to try to help with broad discrimination. I think the reason we're looking at LGBT ordinance is because it's not protected under prior ordinances or statutes, which we can't change statutes, but just addressing ordinances. I think that's where we were wanting to start, and also remind everyone too that fair housing ordinance, I read that simply because it does talk about the various classes, you know, race, color, religion, national origin, et cetera, et cetera, that is where I'm coming from. Commissioner Hedin?
My understanding, my interpretation, is the only way to get the three votes is to make sure that it is broad, and that it needs to be written broad, and then once it's written, we can then.
You can amend it.
Take a look at it and see. And that's, that's my interpretation of what I've heard this evening, I don't know where.
Does that interpret what you said, Commissioner?
That it has to be broad in order for three to look at it.
So we have two that are in favor of the broad ordinance? Do we have three?
Well, in order to move forward, I think we can do a broad ordinance, but also use the language from Covington, Lexington, Louisville, or whichever ordinances we're going to start with, and get something on paper, and then the commission can vote yes or no, and make amendments to, to add or delete.
But that language is not broad, right, Mayor?
Yeah, we didn't, I'm just saying include that, and then say and, however you want to construct an ordinance. I know that's difficult, but I think, I don't know how we can do that, and I think under, if somebody said obesity.
I just threw that out there because.
Those are going to be.
I see that all the time, I see discrimination based on that. I've never, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but it exists, it exists everywhere, everybody suffers discrimination, that's just the bottom line. So we need to protect everybody, and we can't do it.
I'll take a shot at it, Mayor.
We can look under ADA.
The other, I haven't looked at those ordinances specifically, but if they include a human rights commission, I think the commission needs to very seriously consider the cost of a human rights commission, when you look at the salary of an executive director and the other members, when you look at the training, the investigation that they would be required to conduct, the conciliation process they'd be required to implement, the appointment of hearing officers, who is required to be an attorney, pre-hearing matters when you're coming up to a hearing, you know, the preparation and issues of a decision, and then the enforcement of decisions, those do not come at an insignificant cost. Then you also have to look at, at least the draft ordinance that was provided, has very broad powers and duties for the Human Rights Commission to undertake, which include preparing studies, making recommendations, developing and conducting programs and activities, conducting research projects, holding public hearings, investigating complaints, compel regular reports to the city, and if the Human Rights Commission is going to have those duties, that's going to take a full-time person.
Maybe we can draft two separate ordinances. Does anyone object to having two separate ordinances then?
Two separate ordinances?
So that's not, in other words, he's saying if you have to do a Human Rights Commission?
Oh.
Just have them separate instead of having it all in one?
No, I think they should be separate.
I'm saying you don't, it just, you do not have to have a Human Rights Commission, even if a fairness, whether or not a fairness ordinance is passed.
I'm sorry, misunderstood.
And there will also be an exception to make the carve-out for House Bill 279, because that statute prohibits the government from substantially burdening a person's right to act or refuse to act in a manner motivated by a sincerely held religious belief, unless the government can prove by clear and convincing evidence that it has a compelling governmental interest and has used the least restrictive means to further that interest. We'll carve that out, just to make sure that we do not run afoul of that law.
Okay, Commissioner Roach.
I'll tell you why I'm getting confused, but Mr. Moore, how can you do that? That last part, what you just said, how can you do that?
You can, you can, say for example, you can prohibit discrimination on the basis of someone's sexual identity.
Yes, sir.
But, and that's illegal, with the exception of people who are discriminating on the basis of sexual identity, if they're motivated by that discrimination, by a sincerely held religious belief. So.
You see where I'm going.
The rubber hits the road when you get to the hearing, and the person says, well, the reason why I discriminated against that person is because of his sexual identity, and I am a.
A devout atheist, or devout Baptist.
You know, devout whatever you want to call.
It's against that devout whatever.
There are many different religions, as we all know, and.
That's been my, that's been my point all along.
Is that clear as mud?
And you do want it to cover more than housing?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I just read that, I just wanted the fair housing ordinance because I knew it had the definition of what some folks were afraid of, that they would not have religious exemptions or the other things I mentioned. Okay, so are you all ready to move on?
Well, how are we going to, are we going to then put people under a lie detector to see if they really are religious, or if they're just coming up with that based on the moment? This is something that's just going to be so hard to enforce that it's not.
Let's just do a resolution.
Let's do a resolution and set the right example. I just, that's what Patty recommended, I would just, I would totally back that.
Resolution?
Instead of the.
Ordinance?
Sounds doable.
Can we look at the ordinance draft, and then commissioners can decide.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it gives us some time to.
I think you've still got the same two notes and the same two guesses, and I think Commissioner Bowers is the.
I just, I don't see a point in having an ordinance that we can't really enforce, that's going to just.
We have lots of those.
I know, and that's a problem.
So do you want to change?
We have.
Commissioner Bowers?
Change what?
The.
Let me tell you, I absolutely back a resolution, well, assuming that it reads well, I'd like to see it before I vote for it, but I would absolutely back that. I would really like to think that we could have an ordinance that would guarantee everyone is treated fairly, but I know that that ordinance is not going to be enforceable. And it's never going to be able to really, once you make it as broad as it needs to be, you take away the need to even have one. So I'd rather not look at an ordinance, I'd rather just do a resolution.
So that means it's.
It's the only way we can free.
Okay. Just reminder of when.
Commissioner Hedin?
Okay.
So is there support for resolution for LGBT?
BT.
BT, LGBT.
You said that.
But there's four, I'm no, but I'm, just go on, there's four, I'd say we've got ten other things to do.
Any objections to resolution other than, well, Commissioner Roach is on record, we're not really voting.
It's not voting any, just getting a sense of what to do.
Sorry, I keep thinking.
I apologize, one mechanical question, and that is, do you all want the resolution for next Monday? Because that's the next meeting.
We have two o'clock.
Due to the upcoming holiday.
Or do you want it?
Next Monday at two, right? Next Monday at two.
That's our next voting meeting.
Can I make the suggestion? I suggest we put it off until after the budget, and only because at that, because whatever we do, you're still, you're going to have a full house again, and you're going to have the same, well, I thought was very considered arguments on both sides, and I think that with all the things we've got to do between now and the passage of the budget, that it would make more sense to push it out, but if three people want to go ahead with it, I'm, I can fine with that too.
Push it out? After the budget? Okay, well, it will be offered, well, it's after the budget, so we have.
We have a budget on, on May 20th, and our voting meeting in June, so. Could we have a resolution or a draft somewhat in our work session in June, that we could at least look at, let the public be able to see it as well, so that we could?
So if, we'll have it on the June work session agenda then, if there's no objections.
No objections.
Thank everyone for their indulgence and for their strong comments both ways, we appreciate folks, and we will, at this point, we're going to take a recess, take a motion for, well, we're not really going to make a motion, we'll just take a five-minute recess, it may be more like ten. Do you bring any pizza?
Say five.
We'll say a five-minute recess.
I brought two oranges.
Thank you. All members are present, that signifies their presence earlier?
Oh, hold it, hold it, hold it.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, all members are present, that signifies their presence at the original opening, and one thing I want to announce, reminder that on May 20th, we'll have a joint city-county discussion at noon at the, for the E-911 fees, and then at two o'clock, we'll have the regular city commission meeting. Now, the May 20th meeting at noon is going to be at the Health Department on, well, it's the department's office on East West Connect, in the big room. And then the two o'clock meeting will be here at City Hall. Okay, next item on our agenda is to review the $650,000 bid and consider options to sell Leonard Wood properties, so I'll turn that back over to our city solicitor.
Thank you. Mayor, we have pants to sell.
Sure.
He does.
That's okay. Oh, Leonard Wood.
Yeah, cost you. It's our penny need.
Leonard Wood. Yeah, Leon Wardwood.
What?
Leon Wardwood.
Oh.
I apologize.
No, it's okay.
The, the city owns two lots on Leonard Wood Drive, which is, y'all know, between Walmart and Ashwood, and on the interstate side of the road, there's a tract 4.17 acres in size, and on the opposite side of the road, there's a tract, it's 2.77 acres in We have had that property appraised, and then the appraisal updated within the last couple of years, and without revealing the exact amount of the appraisal, you see the figures there. The options that the city has for sale are set forth by statute, and we can transfer the property with or without compensation for economic development purposes, or we can sell the property at public auction, electronic auction, or by sealed bid after proper notification. And then, if the city does not receive a bid for the real property, sold at auction or by sealed bid, that's acceptable, then you can sell the property in any manner that you want to do, so.
Minimum bid, with a seal on it?
And you can certainly do a minimum bid, if you do, whether you have an auction, electronic auction, or sealed bid. You see the purchase price for the property, a number of years ago was right at $600,000. We have about $625,000 in development costs in the property due to the road and everything else, and we have had several calls from folks that are interested in the property within the last six months. We have had one person who wants to put an option on the property for $650,000. I don't believe that you could sell the property for $650 at this time, due to the need to follow the proper statutory procedure, and I would recommend against accepting an offer at that price right now anyway. But is there any interest from the commission in trying to sell the property through one of these three methods, auction, electronic auction, or by sealed bids, and then with a minimum, and then after the, if the auction goes well, then you've sold the property, if the auction does not go well, or the sealed bid process doesn't raise the amount of money, then at that point, you could list it with a Realtor and see if we can get someone to buy it, or we could actually get KCDC perhaps to take a more active approach in marketing the property.
Commissioners, have any thoughts? Commissioner Hedin?
How desired is this land, this property, I mean, does anyone?
We've had several calls on it.
Like within the last couple of weeks, months, years?
Within the, within the last six months, we've had two or three calls, which is more than we have had in the last three years prior to that. The property that's on the side closest to the interstate would have visibility from the interstate, and, you know, there was some thought that that might be a good location for a hotel, and then there has also been discussion of senior housing at that location. Of course, the other, other piece of property is across the street, but that area does seem to be growing, with, you know, Walmart out there, you have Ashwood, and all the medical facilities, you have more traffic than you used to.
And schools.
And schools.
Can you add further?
Not at this moment, I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Roach?
I think it's a good idea to sell it. I don't think the city has any business, for the most part, being in, owning land. We're not any good at it. We've owned this land for what, Mr. Moore, 13 years, 14?
It's a good while.
And I'd say, I'd say you'd be hard pressed to know anybody that knows we own it, because we don't market it. And so we've held that asset for years, and all it's done is sit there. I realize there is some purpose to own some land if you're trying to entice business, et cetera, but I think it's best to sell it and use the money for something else, and I would think once, once we're past the budget, I would like for us to move toward identifying all vacant land that we own, and anything that we can sell that we don't need, sell it. Quickly, just give one example, we own land at Carpenter Farm, and this is just why the government doesn't do well at this. If you've ever gone over there, there's a for sale sign that's about this big, like this, by the sites, nobody in town knows it's there. So we don't have time to do the kind of things that you need to do to sell land and to keep land, so for the most part, I think this, as well as anything else we have that we don't need, we need to sell and use for something else.
I support number two.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
When you look at the options, I support number, number two, two or three, but I just don't know in this day and time what the advantage would be for sealed bids, other than, you know, people just don't know. The auctions, I've seen those, sometimes you get a competitive bid, and what's kind of going on with different people that wants the property.
Could I have, if the city manager and I could talk, and perhaps talk to the folks at KCDC, and maybe come up with a proposal for you all in June or July, whenever. at KCDC and maybe come up with a proposal for you all in June or July, whenever it is, at your convenience?
Do you want to say anything for first Commissioner Haddon, that enough years may be pertinent?
It's not real extremely pertinent based on this property, but it is on the, on the concept of this, of this topic of how many other properties do we have, such as this, that we should look at either trying to get KCDC or whatever you want to call them. I know one part says in our orders that it's SEEDA, but everything else on it is KCDC. To look at the, to look at the properties, or should we try to set up a process as a commission of what we want to do with properties like this?
I would, I would echo Commissioner Haddon's last point, which is I would set up a process. If KCDC is just going to market them, we could do that for a short time, but they've also had properties they've been marketing for years as well. And, you know, I think it's a combination of things, but I'm for, this property here, I think is a high enough value that I think we could go ahead and sell it. But if, if you all want to come back with something from KCDC, I'm happy to look at that.
Well, and what I meant was, the city manager and I, and we probably need to talk to someone with expertise in property, but we'd come back with a recommendation on a minimal bid, so that, you know, if we sell it at an auction, you don't end up selling it for a dollar.
I think that's great.
And then if you don't reach the minimum bid, then at that point, I think it makes good sense to, to put it in the hands of an aggressive Realtor.
Yes, sir.
To sell it.
One thing I would, just for history purposes, years ago, the city, after the city purchased the Carpenter Farm, the city did have a certified real estate appraiser appraise the property. They did market through Lane.
Lane, that's correct.
And so it helped a little, I think we sold a couple of lots, but nothing, nothing since, but the city did recruit its cost on that property.
Yes.
And, and this one here, you see the value. That was done by Kentucky cert, we have to have a Kentucky certified real estate appraiser. There's only a few of those that can actually do this work. I don't think we're allowed, unless there's a certain exemption, to take anything less than what it was appraised for, correct?
I think at an auction, I believe that you could take less than it's appraised for.
Okay.
But I'll double check that.
And then if we sell it at, if we use sealed bids, then we can set a minimum. And if none of the sealed bids hit that minimum, we can just reject it.
Great.
So we'll, then the commission will have for June or July, a recommendation or thoughts back from solicitor and the city manager after talking with KCDC. Just so you know, too, the actual, it's still Capital Community Economic Development Authority doing business as KCDC, right? So you can probably do the one. Either's fine.
I think that was easier.
All right, so next item is?
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Bowers?
I would like to, this is a bit embarrassing, but I went out into the hallway and had a conversation and got some more questions answered. And I've never done this before, and it's a bit embarrassing to do it, but I'm going to do it anyway. I'm going to say I have changed my mind. Isn't that my prerogative?
Sure.
Mr. Solicitor, I think I'm going to give you the third vote to draft an ordinance to look at.
A specific ordinance?
Specific, what do you?
Yes, because I asked some more pointed questions about the issue and got some answers that makes me think I would like to think about this a little more. And when we come back, I'd like to have the ordinance. I'm not saying I'll vote for it, but at least it'll be ready to look at. I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's okay. Commissioner Haddon, do you?
Support ordinance?
Do we need to?
Two.
Do you want to have both?
Point two.
No, I already said I'd supported.
Three.
Three.
I'll prepare the ordinance. Do you want a resolution as well?
Just in case.
It's probably a good idea.
Okay.
Any of the commissioners want to discuss this?
I'll have that for the June work session.
Okay.
Okay. Next item, consider, Mr. Collins, second. The order to reestablish Second Street Form Based Code Task Force, its duty to schedule a membership. Barry Mueller, our planning director?
Yes, information attached to the agenda.
Thank you. Second Street Task Force was created by an order. They completed their task. There were, planning commission in March voted on the proposal, text amendment, and kicked the entire thing back to that committee, Task Force. But after talking to Rob Moore via email, that Task Force really doesn't exist anymore. So if we're going to move forward, we need to reestablish the committee, give it some assignments, a specific timeframe, and then we can go back to the process in order to do what the planning commission is trying to do. Sorry. The cover letter has the, basically the first thing is, ultimately, do we want to continue this as the city commission? And then if so, yes, please have Mr. Moore draft a new order. And then we'll have the tasks and duties and timeframe in that order. And then you'd vote on it, and then we would schedule, staff would schedule meetings with them to get it going.
Commissioner Haddon?
Does the Greening of Americas Capital grant that came in have any way to play in this now? Since the Task Force was done first, this study came second, we got this grant third, they showed up, they had some really cool ideas. A lot of the property is owned by government. Where does that come into play?
The Greening of Americas Capitals grant that we were able to get and the outcome, we haven't got the final product, but based on the meetings and the draft I've seen, it's an awesome proposal. There's five areas. That, our eligibility to get that grant, they look at what plans we are, have already done and what plans are in the works. And the Second Street plan was in the works, and we already had the Riverfront redevelopment plan that helped us. We applied two years prior for that grant for a different part of town and didn't get it at all. We applied it with this one and we did get it. So I think the work that was done is great. The public realm section of the Second Street Form Code, I criticized, I had problems with it. Others at the public hearing at the planning commission had some comments concerning as well. I think it will help that in a lot, in a lot of ways. If we're able to not just accept the grant plan, but implement what it says.
Both of them together?
Implement the, well, if we implement the Greening of Americas plan, that would be wonderful asset for our community and our downtown on Second Street. And hopefully, it will either take the place of or supplement whatever work the new Task Force does in the public realm section. Public realm being the public right of us.
Commissioner Hodge?
So the, I talked to you the other day, just to kind of, so the choices are no, yes, yes with the historic preservation element stripped out, or no and maybe make some special circumstances for, or ask that there be special circumstances for zoning, which many times lead people to think you need them everywhere.
Correct. No, don't do anything, don't assign the.
Right, so that's one choice.
Yes, assign a task force, give them an order, and let them do the work and go back to the planning commission, ultimately, hopefully, back to you all. Third one is be very limited in your yes and specific in what you want them to do, removing some of the historic preservation elements out of it. And then the fourth one is no, but assign staff or ask the planning commission to do some massaging of other ideas, concepts that may help with the zoning of the area.
Thanks. Any of the commissioners have questions? What do you, what do you think, based on your professional recommendation? Are you, are you not ready to do that?
No, I can. I've been thinking about it. There was a lot of work done by the Task Force. There was a grant that allowed us to hire folks from UK and UFL that prepared the text. There were public input, a lot of time and energy by public, by staff, and by the planning commission. And the planning commission, I believe, while they had a lot of concerns, as well as staff had, I was specific on my concerns, I believe. After the public hearing and the testimony, the planning commission felt it best to go back to the Task Force with the assignment of amend it based on the comments that we've had and we've heard in the discussions and bring it back to us. They didn't outright kill it, so I would support trying to get it back, I think, would be the proper, best thing to do. Get the Task Force, let them amend the proposal, or recommend to you all, we don't want to do it at all. They've got to look at it and do something. I think that's the best appropriate approach, to be honest. It's not the shortest and it's not the quickest. But I think that's the right thing to do.
So you keep historic preservation in it?
Now, that's a different question.
It's related.
Yes, do we need to have some elements of historic preservation? Yes. There are structures that are, I would hate to see torn down. If they come in tomorrow and apply for building permit, I'm obligated to issue a building permit for demolition without any review, concepts, neighborhood discussions, anything that I would like to see at least the ability for citizens to have a chance to say, wait, let's, can we try to help and can we try to save it before it's just demolished? On the efforts that the city commission has assigned me on amending the Article 17 and the public, I'm getting ready to do a press release Wednesday of this week about a citizen survey assessment about historic preservation, amending Article 17, all that work we're doing, needs to end up in whatever this Task Force does and whatever the planning commission does, in my opinion, mirrors. If we're going to have some historic preservation in this area. The biggest thing was maintenance, materials on maintenance, not, I'm going to build new and you can only use brick, we didn't go there. But we did say, if you've got a wood window, you've got to put a wood window back to repair, replace. That was the biggest, that had a lot of concerns from a lot of owners. Some of the maintenance could be taken out, some of the maintenance could be massaged, more in line with where we're headed, I think, in Article 17. I don't know, because we're not, unfortunately, we're not at the point where I have citizen comments from the survey and I don't have a good draft of a proposed Article 17. Article 17 is the Art Text Review Board guidelines. I don't have all that done, I'm not at that point. And then Second Street Form Code is completely different, yet it follows it. It's a lesser version of today's Article 17, but it's all brand-new Article 17 for this area, because none of them are subject to any Art Text Review guidelines today, unlike everyone else that I'm massaging. I can say the current president, chairman of the Second Street Task Force has asked to keep it going. He has, he is actually taking a very strong initiative on making changes based on the planning commission's comments. He's preparing a little draft for their meeting, should there eventually soon be a meeting. He's thinking they can have it wrapped up in about three months or less, back to the planning commission. And his initial feelings is, let's worry about demolitions, worry about form code, which allows any of the uses and no parking orientation, but less on the historic section and less, or none, actually, I think he said none, on historic maintenance. So he's gone, there's been a shift, I guess, at least for that one individual. There's only been two others that said they have an interest. One, the DFI member that was picked has resigned. And we just haven't heard from three others, one right and another.
We have to, if, if we, if we get the grant, on the Greening of Americas, if we're able to get some of those grants, those real neat things, these are, these can be mutually exclusive, correct? In other words, you could not, you could not renew this and still proceed with some of those Greening of Americas things? Is that accurate?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the Greening of Americas grant was to provide the study. That's being handed.
Yeah, I like that.
They will provide us funding sources for future grants to help implement it. So they are totally separate, I guess. Whether one takes, it will take a long time to implement all those, the Greening of Americas, but they had some wonderful, wonderful suggestions that will help the citizens, the pedestrians, getting to Second Street, getting to the Capitol, getting across Capitol Avenue, and then the Grand Park.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be telling, I was just, what I was, so, political, I was just saying to commissioners, I started thinking, we've got the budget, so we don't really have to decide tonight, but we are going to vote on Monday. So I just wanted to let you all know what we were, not trying to keep anybody out, but you probably couldn't hear me discussing it. Commissioner Haddon? Sorry.
With, with your last statement you just said, with the grant money, how important is it to have this Task Force be part of it in order to get funding? Is it vital to have public input?
Funding for the Capitol Greening of Americas projects?
Uh huh, and grant money with that.
That might be a better question for Rebecca Hall. I will take a stab. The grant that was awarded for the Greening of Americas, reference that we have this undergoing. If it dies, it doesn't jeopardize one we have.
You're right.
I think it doesn't help us to move forward on other grants. But I don't know if it hurts us either. If we had an ongoing project that we're trying to implement and we're trying to keep going and move forward on, usually that is like an extra point, a checkbox, good thing for a community.
Well, if it means anything to the rest of the.
Little ability.
Commission, I would still like to see this Task Force go forth. I'm a, I'm a yes. Preferably a number two yes and going forth and not a number three, limited yes.
And the only thing I was going to clarify or state, because I might have misheard, there's no order on the agenda for Monday, next Monday.
Okay, that's one, I'm sorry.
We're simply trying to decide an assignment for Rob Moore.
What do we have to do to, he gave us a recommendation. Is there something, is that what we'd be voting on on Monday?
I guess we'd be voting whether or not you want to continue the Task Force. We have to reappoint.
This evening, with basically what I'm really shooting for is asking Rob Moore to prepare an order, a new order, or amending the order that we previously had for the Second Street Task Force. And then you all can get the word out, and I will help get the word out on that we need members to fill that Task Force. That's the, really the crutch.
And then it would come on to vote in the June voting.
Most, yes, because it wouldn't, yeah.
I guess, I guess I'm, I'm not real sure what I'm going to, what I would vote for, and only because I need to know a little bit more, but I would think at this particular juncture, if I'm for it, it would only be if the historic preservation element stripped out, and I would be leaning toward no, and just have the staff and the planning commission come up with some ways to strengthen that corridor. I don't, I don't think that, I think there's too much of a danger of this being a taking from people that are existing property owners, that they'll wake up one morning after this is all done, their property won't have the same value it does now. And I realize that there's a strong argument on the other side as well. But this is a tough issue, and so I'd say I'm no with trying to jazz it up internally with planning here and. with planning here and a planning commission, or yes with no historic preservation element.
Anybody else want to chime in? Another clear as mud issue for you there, solicitor.
Can we discuss it again Monday and give him more guidance then? If we don't have enough people, because this is something that's, you know, may not be able to just decide right here looking at it.
We cannot do it on Monday because-
Oh, special.
It's a special meeting.
Unless you want to add it.
Two, so one was basically, don't do anything, no, and don't do anything. Two would be yes, and four, three was yes, limited.
Copy that was done, that was cut in half.
Or no, and have them try to do something internally.
I make a motion that we, I guess you don't make motions, I just suggest that we add it to the special meeting on Monday.
Give me a second.
We'll add that to the call.
Thanks very much.
To discuss.
Is it to discuss? In order to consider?
No, to discuss whether or not we'll move forward in June.
It doesn't need to be added, because this is an agenda item.
Oh, okay, but this isn't an agenda item.
It will be.
Is it okay? We can add it to the agenda? Can it be on the special call?
If the agenda hadn't been drafted, right.
Okay. Okay. Any of them object? All right, cool. I'm sorry. Is that cool? All right, that's great. We'll move forward now, and we still have the budget, but quick consideration, do you all want to consider the bid process for third-party downtown parking enforcement? Or get to the budget?
I have a few questions on that there.
You can go first. Oh, the chief's going to do it, okay.
She was mostly just for clarification. It's more of a who, what, where, when, why, and how. What currently is our process right now, besides a third-party parking enforcement?
We employ part-time employees to mark the tires and write tickets downtown.
We have two of those, is that correct?
Currently, we only have one.
One. But we have two budgeted?
That's correct.
Okay. And, so, why do we need this? Why can't our staff member, why can't a part-time or two part-time staff members do this?
We can do this. It's, it was brought up in, I think, the goal of planning studies about downtown parking, and not only downtown parking, but the marketing of the garage and the movement of the traffic downtown. And we'd had a presentation before from a group that proposed to do this, and in order, in order to send it out to a third party, we would have to bid the service out.
And if we go to, right now, when someone gets, when someone gets a ticket, what's the process from there?
They can pay, right, they can pay the parking ticket at the police department or send it in, the tickets are kind of self-contained envelopes, they could send it in that way. But it's paid to the police department.
Okay. And what happens if someone, does it pay?
They're sent letters, notices to pay. After so many tickets, then the car can be removed, or we don't boot anymore, but we can, we can remove the car from downtown and then pound it until they pay the tickets.
Okay. Do we have a large percentage of people who do not pay?
There's a lot of different people that park that way, yeah, I mean, you know, say, people in rental cars or things like that. A lot of times the rental companies will come back and pay, but we have to go back and, you know, track them down and collect them. There are people who don't pay their tickets. You know, some people will just get one ticket and go out of the heck with it, you know. We're not going to take everybody, we're not going to take everybody to court who doesn't pay one ticket.
I saw that.
Right. Okay, and so then my next question from there is, is the same person who's the part-time employee also the one who does the work inside the office?
No. No, those are police record clerks.
Police record clerks. And how many of those do we have?
We have three of those, but not all of them are dedicated to the parking ticket endeavor.
Okay. I know they wish they were. I'm sure they wish they were. Okay. And those are all part-time or full-time employees?
Those are full-time employees.
And, how important is it to our city to bid this versus keeping it internally?
There are pros and cons for both approaches.
I'm sure.
And, you know, the police department, you know, when I was a young officer, the youngest officer on the shift got to do that, and I was the, for quite some time, I was the youngest officer in the police department, you know, so, once upon a time, but the police officers said, oh hell, it's been long enough. But after a while, the, we got to where we were hiring people to do it. Right now, what we try to do, what we're currently trying to do is, we try to use Kentucky State students, people who are interested in law enforcement, might be majoring in criminal justice. That's been a successful program, of course. Many of our former part-time employees have gone on to become officers. We have several officers in our department that were previously parking enforcement officers. But that's the part-time individuals. You know, we've used retired folks before. One in particular was a great ambassador for downtown. I'm sorry we don't have her anymore and couldn't keep her, but, you know, there's different ways that we approach it. This was just another way, if I had my druthers, I'd rather go outside, but there are compelling arguments to keep it inside also. I'm not weighted one way or the other.
Are there any viability issues that we should consider if going to a third-party enforcement versus keeping it internally?
That would be your city solicitor to-
Rebecca.
The proper contract there that would have to be drawn out. And that's why I said in the bids, we're just in the draft process right now. I've just given some ideas to the city solicitor and the finance director to look at. It's going to take some time to be refined, and I think his plate's pretty full right now, so. I do believe our garage contract is up in February, so this might be something that we might want to consider as a total package. We thought perhaps at first, we would want to get something done before the judicial center opened, but at the rate we're going now, that will not happen. So quite frankly, you know, the police department's going to have to redouble our efforts on the parking enforcement once, particularly once the judicial center opens up, because parking will be at a premium downtown. The inventory that you have now will not be there.
And I guess, just for clarification, and we would then take both people that are budgeted off of the budget as part-time enforcers.
That's correct.
And would we also have to take off one of the clerks, or would you still need all three for other things?
Oh, I had plenty to keep them busy.
I'm sure you do. Okay, thank you, and I'm sorry I put you on the spot with these questions.
That's what I'm here for.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just real quick, I guess I have two questions that are real simple. Is it cheaper to subcontract it? Are we going to save money or not?
I can't say for sure.
Okay, that's all right. My guess is probably not, but that's just a guess.
It's probably pretty, pretty close, pretty even.
All right, so my second question is, is can this be part of an overall plan, whether it's done by the city or by this parking authority, or creating a parking authority, or just subbing it out, or an overall plan to do a better job of enforcing parking and perhaps, and this is, I don't think we have ordinances or anything on this lines, but something where, you know, the problem is, is that the parking garages aren't utilized, they're underutilized, and so we're getting ready to get another one that I suspect will be underutilized. And so that, what we really need is to have more parking, you know, on the street for people that are coming in to spend money. And I, and I just have, I just, it really bothers me when people that work, have businesses or that work for various entities downtown, park on the street, and then that, that doesn't free up those parking. So I'd like for whatever we do to be part of an overall solution in that area, but it may be one of these things like we were talking about earlier tonight, it may not be possible.
The enforcement, I think, is Britton still here? Oh, yeah. We've had several conversations along these lines over the years, but really, what it boils down to is enforcement, whether it's us or a third party. When you do the two-hour chalking, you know, that's, there are some efficiencies lost doing that. A third-party vendor would perhaps use GPS technology, that kind of thing, to, you know, you would, without putting the coins in the, in, you know, in machines and putting machines up and down the line, you could, you know, you could be a little more precise as to, you know, who's in what spot for how long and whatever. So, you know, it could be a technology thing that if the police department were to continue doing it, that we would explore using newer technology.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. I think we're, right now, just, we'll just mull it over.
What?
The proposal, do you want to have it on the agenda for Monday to consider this? Or do you just want to think about it and then come back in June? Is that what you're going to ask?
Yes, if I could make a suggestion, as Chief Will Hoyt said, that we did have some interest from an existing contractor who's doing our garage, and did you not say, Chief, that that contract is up in February?
That's correct.
Maybe the best suggestion would be then for us to continue as we are, and then look, give us some time to bid that out, maybe toward the latter part of the year, and see if there is interest either on that company's part or anybody else's, but continue this summer as we are.
Well, we, I guess, it seems like there's-
Consensus.
Maybe not complete, but majority. Is that okay to do that?
That would be fine.
Of course, we can always change them. I didn't mean that.
You talking to me?
No, I just meant in general, I said if we, if you decide later on, and, well, let's go ahead and bid it out, that's what I meant, I'm sorry. Don't want to get myself in trouble. Okay, you ready to, we'll talk about the budget, and we'll take, it's going to take a couple of minutes for the staff to get ready, does anyone need to?
Do you still have the ethics work?
Anybody need to take a quick, three-minute? While you're coming forward, we'll let the city finance director bring his papers forward and get those laid out. A lot? Is it easier, is it easier to go in the council chamber? I mean, I'm sorry, in the conference room? Is it easier for you?
I'm sorry. What about the cameras?
Cameras, can the cameras be turned on? Okay, so we'll take a second to get situated, because the budget documents need to be laid out, is that easier for you?
I don't care either, I'm basically going to cover one summary document, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to drag you off.
Okay. Oh, okay, so.
I can go through it.
All right, well, we'll just stay here then. How is it on for Commissioner Roach? He's going to go ahead and just do it. We'll take a, let's just stand at ease for about five minutes. The objections? Yeah, I didn't mean, what I meant was, if you wanted to come back and do the-
Now, you know the clerk, you know, what I'm going to do is have a draft of resolution, and we'll write the ordinance.
Let's go back and reconsider votes.
Lessens, gays.
Yeah, okay, I see that now.
No, I'm sorry, I said, I was just-
On the basis of housing, employment, public conditions, those three.
I mean, I basically, I have thirty-two million dollars, that's a change. And they were doing, I mean, I remember this.
This is the summary sheet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead. Okay, sorry.
Last body, I handed you a summary sheet, and that's, I'm going to stick with that tonight, and then just ask questions. You can jump from that and ask me questions, but I'm going to hit some of the key points on that. So it's a two-page document, it says 2013-14 General Fund Budget Summary. Everybody got that?
No.
Yes, sir.
We can have an extra one.
I want to share.
I do.
I share.
You okay?
Yep.
You share?
Yep.
Okay, I'm not going to read this document, I'm going to hit some of the key items on here really quickly, and then I'll give you a chance to ask some questions. But this pretty much summarizes our budget for the, the general fund for 2013-14. First thing I want to stress is that we, you know, the goal and objectives of the commission was to have a structurally balanced budget, so that's what we strive to do in this thing, and that was one of the number-one objectives that we had. And within that same framework, we tried to keep the property taxes level, tax, taxes and fees, other taxes and fees with no increase, as well as keeping the insurance premium tax flat and the occupational tax flat. So there's no increases in this budget, and we have a structurally balanced budget. The next thing I want to stress here is that in doing this, we had the support of all the department directors, and I want to thank those guys for a really good job that they've done. You know, this process seems to drag out for about four to six months, and it's a lot of back and forth, and we appreciate all their patience and working together, and especially Tim. Tim's done a great job in leading this process, and I want to thank him as well. So that's what it took to put this budget together, and then your all support as well. Second thing I want to stress off this page is, we started to take a look at other alternative sources of financing, and we started talking about this on some of our larger projects, so we could take advantage of the lower interest rates that are effective right now, some of the lowest, lower interest rates, we've had historically low interest rates, and also it will give us a chance to spread out some of the cost, you know, to, throughout the year, as opposed to, you know, one-time purchases. So those large purchases, we're going to consider bonding, and we're going to start talking about some of that in here in the future, but we've considered some of that as we, as we walk through the budget process. Also, we looked at improving the work climate for the employees, so we have a COLA that we have identified here, a one and a half percent that would be effective from July 2nd, that's actually the pay period, it would start, the pay period it would be effective from, and then the one percent from 1/14. So that impact is about $400,000, and it's in this budget, so, you know, we still have a structurally balanced budget, in spite of the fact that we have a COLA proposed in this budget. And lastly, and just as importantly, we've tried to improve our efficiency standards by- by, you know, we're like everybody else, you know, we need to work smarter and try to work more efficiently. And we've, in this budget, we've eliminated three positions, and we've also transferred two full-time positions to part-time positions. And hopefully in the future, we can take those, eliminate those positions as we streamline our garbage collection system. So those are some of the key points from this first page and the first couple paragraphs. The next thing I'd like to stress here is, go ahead.
I thought I saw somewhere, those, there's two police positions, right?
Yes, two police positions.
And two in sanitation became, they went to part-time.
They went to part-time, right.
And then there's one in communications.
Yes, there's one in communications, a director's position that we're proposing to eliminate.
Okay, well, I guess I'm just going to say for the record that I am not for, now these people left, they just, it's attrition, am I right?
Right.
But I'm not for, like, cutting out jobs. Somewhere I read in my pile of papers that the COLA was basically possible because of those job eliminations.
Well, we used, we used some of that money to offset.
It kind of equaled the amount.
Yeah, we used that money to offset.
Here's the thing, if those jobs were necessary at one point, why are they not necessary now? And the point I want to make is, and I think it's a real important point that we need to understand, is when we stress employees to the point that they start having health issues, that drives up the cost of health insurance, and we pay for it indirectly through unemployment, unemployment insurance. So I don't think it's wise to cut out jobs so that we are balancing a budget, because there are lots of repercussions to that that far outweigh any benefit that we get. I'd rather forego my little COLA increase, which is less than a couple hundred dollars a year. And if everybody is willing to do that, I'm not saying we can change this budget, those positions are gone. But I am not in favor of trying to scale back our workforce down here. I'm not in favor, I think it's really, I think it's, I know that that's what organizations do, it's real common, but I think it's a really bad, bad move, because the costs are a lot more than what we see initially in terms of savings. So I just want to put that out there, because I'm not in favor of going that route from here on out. Ooh, I just made a wrong, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, police not positions that have been in the budget for a couple of years are not filled. These were not recent.
Okay.
And I realize that we didn't go in and take somebody out, that, but I'm saying,
if that's the way we're thinking, that that's how we're going to save money, then eventually it's going to come down to what other people do, and that is when somebody goes away, we just don't fill it. And I just don't think that that's smart.
Well, like Tim said, like the two police positions, they've probably been vacant for, what do you say, maybe three budget periods, Mark, I'm not sure.
Whoever y'all did your hiring freeze.
Yeah. So we've had those two positions, and I know the, the director of E-911, that's been vacant for about a year and a half now. We've got some overlapping coverage from, from emergency management is doing, is doing the management for that. So we've covered, we've covered those functions.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Barrett, will you be through?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Roach.
I just suggest that as we, as we go forward, and we look at eliminating positions based on attrition, we just look at them on a case-by-case basis, because, you know, it's, unfortunately, we're up against the iron law of mathematics. And that is, if you're increasing your personnel costs greater than what the revenue is coming in, the city has had to, the last four or five years, decrease headcount. They also raised taxes $1.4 million last time. So we're up against an iron law. And so you're going to have to, on a case-by-case basis, do that, or you're going to, or you're going to raise taxes, the gap between the increase in revenue and the personnel costs every year.
Good point.
But, so I think, I agree with her, we need to be careful, because we don't want to get rid of something we need. But that's a problem that we have, if our costs are going up higher than our income coming in.
And the thing is, we don't want to, like,
Yeah, okay.
We don't want it to impair our services. But really, what I think people don't understand is, or I guess, I don't want to insult anybody's intelligence again, I didn't know I did that, but, you know, it seems real, just quick and easy to cut out jobs, and we're saving money, but really, really, in the long run, we pay for it in the bigger picture. We pay for it out there when we have people on unemployment, and it's costing us, and the employees left are doing more than one job, and they're having stress, and stress leads to illness, and illness leads to going to the doctor, and going to the doctor leads to higher healthcare. So we're talking about, you know, what we're going to do with the healthcare, and there's no easy way. And I think that too many times organizations think that that's the easy way, and they take the easy way. But in the long run, it's more problematic than the short-term solution. I just want to say, I don't want to be cutting out jobs. I'd rather, you know, look at other things in the future. These are already gone. I'm sorry, Chief.
Chief, do you want to say?
If I may, talking about the two police positions, you know, those were funded positions that, because of the freeze, that we didn't fill. But the reason, the reason they're taken off of there is, is based on a manpower allocation study.
Okay.
And, you know, by, you know, determining
We don't need
Calls for service, 63 is the point that we should be at.
Okay.
And the numbers support that. As far as the communications position, that was a merging of two departments, emergency management and E-911, in order to try to increase efficiencies. I'd love to have 75 officers, and if you want to give me more, I'll take them, believe me. We'd love to have them, but the reality is, you know, our employees would like to have raises too.
You've got what you need in terms of
And just from, just from kind of sitting in both seats up here, you know, I wanted to be realistic in my budget, and, you know, I don't like these soft freezes and, you know, fake numbers and stuff. It is what it is. If I need 65 officers next year, I would hope the board would support me and give me 65 officers one way or the other. And if the workload demands it, then that's what I would ask for. But, you know, from my perspective, it's very black and white.
That's good. I mean, I'm glad to hear that you have what you need. I just know that in some organizations, the quick fix seems to be eliminate jobs, and I just don't think that that's a good answer for anybody, any organization. It creates, it creates a bad environment where employees are in fear of money next, or, and the financial costs, but, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
That's the point I was making earlier, we've all worked together on this budget, and, you know, Mark was, he was aware of the numbers, and he's been looking at it for some time. So it's been a group effort to do this budget. The next point that I would like to make is in the middle of the first page, is we give you a proposed budget that actually has a little surplus, and we're bringing in right now, the projected receipts are 32. almost $9 million, and our projected expenditures are 32.7. So we've got about a $200,000 projected receipts surplus. And I will tell you that the expenditures are probably still very conservative, so I'm projecting that we can have an excess anywhere from $2,000 to $700,000, you know, when we finish out this year. So that's, and, you know, if things, if things continue to improve in healthcare, you know, we might see a little bit more of a bump, but at least that level, probably in the $500,000 range. The next area is the receipts summary, and that's, we see 32, like I said, the detail of the receipts is 32.9 million dollars. And if you look at this year compared with last year, the budget compared with the estimate, we're seeing a bump of $1.2 million in the receipts, and that's due primarily to the, what's due to the occupational tax rate change. And also, I will tell you that we projected some growth in the, in the occupational tax of about 1%, which is about $160,000. Any more questions on that first page?
Go ahead.
The previous commission, we went with occupational tax increase, secondary to insurance premium tax increase from a 6%, and we talked about going up to 8%. Ish, is your mindset still to go in that direction with increasing insurance premium tax while this commission's here, or are you still going to try to maintain it at a 6%?
I'm hoping we can, we can keep this right flat for a while. We don't have any increases for several years.
Okay.
That's our hope, to continue to, you know, to work our costs down and to hold our tax rates flat.
And with the property tax, you still wanting us to take the minimum, or?
Just leave it flat. We request, this budget has the rates, the property tax rates flat, 20.9 cents per hundred, same as last year. And if actually the values go up, the assessed values, the rates could possibly go down, because just, when you do the calculation, it'll just keep the income coming in at a flat level.
I never thought I'd hear those words come out of your mouth.
So, well, we got, you know, that's our, we're keeping it flat.
Say it one more time.
Not a decrease, but flat, right.
All right, thank you.
Actually, we took a, we took a 2% decrease last year. Any other questions or thoughts on that page?
I guess, just from a procedure standpoint, when do you want broad questions, when do you want specific questions, how do we want to do that?
You want me to finish up
Yes, sir.
This summary, and then we can, we can go and delve into the details, if you want. Any kind of detail, I'll try to answer, or the managers will answer.
Right.
Okay, the second page has a breakdown of the expenses, and as I said, you know, we've got a 32.7 million dollar expense projection for the budget. And comparing against last year's budget, the difference is, is, you know, we've got a COLA in this year's budget, but actually, the expenses went down on the, on the salary and benefits. It went from 23.5 to 23.2. Several major reasons for that, we had a pension cost decrease of about $100,000. And another thing we had is, healthcare's experiencing some cost savings, about $300,000. And then the elimination of those three positions. So we had enough to offset more than offset, you know, the COLA increase, and still have a decrease, and actually reduced our percentage budget base-wise from 72.3% to 71%. That's of total cost. That's what the salaries and benefits is of total cost. The other, the other change is number four down there, the other thing I would like to point out is the agency and the equipment budget increased from 1.2 million to 1.6 million, about a $400,000 increase. And that's two things kind of driving that. Three police vehicles that we were able to put in this budget, $122,000, and one garbage truck that we didn't have in there last year, that we're able to purchase out of this budget for $265,000. Two, two items, major items that were in this budget that weren't in the last budget. So that's, that's one thing. We've kind of talked about, you know, the reduction in headcount and reduction in our employee costs was about $230,000, and the COLA, the effective COLA increase was about $400,000. And everything else, you know, we've tried to free, we froze the overhead cost, and we froze agency contributions at last year's level. I might say the only real change we had in the agency contributions is we transferred, community action agency picked up home healthcare, that portion of, from the senior citizen group, they picked that, that program up. And so, community action agency asked for $10,000, and we recommended to give them $5,000, and take $5,000 from Franklin County Council on Aging. And I've talked to both of those groups, and they're both okay with that. So I
Oh, that's okay, that's the same. Did you mean Meals on Wheels, or?
Well, that's probably part of it. I'm not sure what I was involved in that program, but I think that's part of it. So, but yeah. But anyway, I talked to both of those individuals, the directors from those different, executive directors from both of those agencies, and they were, they were okay with that today. And also, we sent a letter to tell everybody what their contribution was. The last thing, capital purchases, capital purchases amounts to 1.2, almost 1.3 million dollars of this budget. And I've got a breakdown of some of the large items, you can just look down through there. So, any questions or comments? That's pretty much it in a nutshell. The budget pretty much stayed on its expenditure side, you know, like it was last year. The big change, I reckon, is we got the increase from the rate change, you know, on the, on the receipt side. And please feel free to ask any kind of questions about any detail. I've given you a lot of detail, but, you know, I wasn't going to drag you through that, through that mess tonight. But I don't know how much you've looked at it, but any questions you've got, if you feel comfortable asking them now, or I'll, you know, if you want to ask me, you know, tomorrow, or sometime this week, you can get with me, and I'll sit down with anybody and go through some of this stuff if you want.
I have a question. And you guys can just give the information back out. I still haven't received it, but my question is, how many vehicles do we have take home that are not police or fire-related, I guess, and would it make sense if we would just have a pool of vehicles versus, I, budgetary question?
If I may.
Uh huh.
I don't know the number of the non-public safety vehicles. I thought we provided a list a couple of weeks ago, but you'll give us an opportunity, we can, I'll have it in the update Friday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It was a spreadsheet.
Yes, we gave you a spreadsheet, a list.
And then actually, this could be a general question, because actually, the budget, I do a lot of budgeting, and this rolled up very well. What I saw, when I looked at the trend, like contracts, we evidently are expecting to do more contracting, just, you know, I could almost put out any example, where one year we estimate spending 108, this is on even the police department, and say that this current year, we're recommending 168. Now, I'm seeing those kind of increases, I mean, like, all these blue marks have increases where the previous year, we didn't spend even The actual expenditures. Right, I'm not even close, I'm wondering why. And I didn't see the answers to the whys there, and I didn't know if we were going to go that detailed tonight, or, actually, if I had not, if I'd have been out of town, I would have just sent those particular ones in, but it started to be, it looked like a trend, and I didn't know if that was, it looked like we could have more money. Maybe that's why you said range from $200,000 to $700,000 could come in, that might be, may account for it. Well, sometimes what happens on those contracts, and my understanding, just talking with some of our folks, that we budget at a certain level, when you get to, and they've got some work that needs to be done, but they hold till they get to the very end of the budget period, and they realize, you know, that they've got a little bit of excess that they can spend out of that budget, and they'll spend that, you know, that contract money if there's something to be done. Another thing is, as we reduce our staff, we're probably going to see, you know, a little bit more spent in contracts, contract costs, third-party contract costs. But I'm not sure if that's driving it as of yet, but I don't know if anybody's got any, any comments on that, as far as our contractual services that we have in our budgets?
Does he have a question?
Is there any specific
Is there any specific one that you?
Oh, I can give you the one, I can.
I think it's this one he's pulled.
That's just one that I put out. This one, well, all of them say 107, it said contractually, budgeted last year 143.8, estimate 108.7, request 168, 135.
Right.
I can approach the bench here.
No, get back, you got it done!
I think it's just on the general.
It's just the general?
Right, oh, oh, is this, no, this is police department.
No, I'm saying on the general, the part where it says, you know, personnel services, benefits, contractual, is that what he's talking about?
I can answer that.
I knew it when they.
Sorry, Mark. Those would be contracts we have, like particularly with software vendors that wouldn't be listed under computers or in some other category where it was moved from, say, last year IT had handled the police department budget on some things, now the police department is showing that in their budget as a, as a true reflection of, of the police department's expenditure. So, you know, it could be.
Same thing in my department, too.
Yeah.
So, that's the same thing with the other services, 'cause that same kinda increases is coming there.
Right, right, well, you have an increase there, you may have a decrease from somewhere else. It, it's just a placeholder, I suppose, you know, where, where my department wasn't paying for that in previous years, it was paid by another department, now we're having to show it in our budget.
I think if I could, it's just an accounting measure of saying we're spending a hundred, this is a made up number, $100,000 across the board for certain computer or IT services and Joe, this is just breaking it down by the department, letting the true cost of each department be reflected. It's not gonna change the bottom line, it's just accounting measures to account for it and track it.
If you look, if you look through your detail, Tommy, if you look at IT, you'll notice IT's overhead went down.
Right.
Mine went up 20, about $25,000 because I just, basically what I did is I trans, I was, what I was doing is I was giving my IT cost to Juleson and he was, just so he could review it and he was including it in his budget, but we just decided as an organization that we would, we would keep our IT costs within our own budget. So, Mark and I both were doing that, so now we've, we've put those costs on our budget in our overhead. That's why my cost went up, that's why Mark's went up in that area, I forgot.
Street was same way, that's, I could've put just my.
But I don't, yeah.
Another, excuse me, another example that would be particularly in my budget, telephone, where it looks like we've asked for a lot more money. Those were items that IT covered last year was the air cards for the mobile data terminals and phone services for some of the investigative units.
What is there, is this put in the actual cost by department, in the department?
I broke down a lot of the contractual.
Like, this is the same way, this is streets. See, it's $10,000 request for this material, everything is my baseline.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, that's the kinda stuff I was running across and I couldn't find an answer.
If you got, like, if you want to, maybe give me.
Hold this, 'cause I didn't get a chance to do it.
You know, and I'll send you an answer. But that's some breakdown of some of the stuff, including those contractual services.
Okay, thank you. Right, right here.
Okay.
Did you need this one?
Any of those questions that we're answering for one commission, we'll put for all commissioners, we'll put them in the update.
Okay, any other questions or comp?
Commissioner.
Commissioner, I'm sorry.
I guess I wanna just be told what process to use and then I'm fine with going with that process. I had, I had a number of specific questions, it sounded like they're very similar to Commissioner Haynes', and I've, I've talked to the city manager a little bit to get a feel for it, but I guess the, the question that I have would be like, for example, if you go over to the city manager budget, budget form five and go over there on page three, it'll say professional fees. We budgeted 39,000 in 2012, 2013. We spent 30,000, so we requested 39,000. And so, there's a thread on a lot of those, so I would, I would wanna make sure, and I know, and I am very confident in you and Tim and our department heads, but I would wanna make sure that we need 39,000.
Yeah.
And when there's a big jump, not just something, it's a couple of thousand, but when there's a big jump from one to the other, and there's a pretty good number of those, and I'm sure y'all have got support for them, but, but that's just, if you're just looking at this, not knowing much about it, that's what strikes you is, is that, and you're right, you don't know for sure what you have even spent in 2012, 2013, correct?
Right.
And so, we're, that estimate is just a guess and I assume we tried to guess what we're gonna spend in the last two months, too?
What we did, particularly on that account that you're asking about, but I know there's others like it, but, but we tried to go through and estimate who's gonna, what vendors were gonna owe certain money and we, I think Rob and I actually went through that account and talked about, it broke down what we thought our costs were gonna be for each vendor and for each service that was gonna be provided and that's how we came up with that number.
Came up with the 5,000 number?
Yeah, with the professional services number that we, that we budgeted on the city manager's account.
I mean, 30, 39, okay.
So, that's, that's the 39,000 or whatever that you were talking about, that's.
And so, we can't come up with the 30,000 number, just sort of estimating what we've spent so far and then do we factor in what we're gonna spend in the last two months or not?
Yeah, well, what I tried, what I try to do is look at it on a pro rata basis, but you know, I'm gonna be honest with you, a lot of those contractual services, they don't come in flat, you know, they don't come in pro rata, you know, sometimes it comes in heavy on the back end, sometimes it comes, you know, it comes in heavy in the middle of the year, they're not real flat. Like, I'll give you an example, in finance, my, I spent $40,000 in contractual service for the PVA office to do the appraisals on the real estate property every year. That invoice comes in all in one time, comes in in February, but you know, if it didn't come into the back end, like the bond payment, the bond payment doesn't come to the last, you know, in the last month, it's not, we're not prorating that expenditure, so it's not, you can't just take an expense and, and prorate it and say, well, this is what it's gonna be, you've gotta have a little bit of history and know what, what's still laying out there, some of the costs. And some of these managers, they're holding back as long as they can and if, if they see that they're over time, like for example, this is just an example, but if streets spend a lot of time, you know, cleaning the streets and had a lot of overtime during the winter season, they're probably, you know, Todd's probably gonna hold back and not do that contractual service that he needs to perform, you know, until maybe next budget year, I don't know. Are you, like on streets, he was asking, there's contractual service jump, is there any particular item that's driving that cost?
contractual?
Uh-huh.
Do you like, I'm sorry, what type of work is it? Earthwork.
So, you've got some, you've got some exact items that you're kinda holding on to the end of the budget period, do you have it spent?
Typically, all of our superintendents do that.
Right.
So, with the, with the best, rather than to tie everybody up here for ever and a day with these, these, would it be, would be the best instrument, just to email?
Sure.
And then get, and get answers that way?
Yeah.
We'll get him, I wanna make sure, whatever's best.
I think that works well, then we'll respond to everybody.
Did that the last couple times.
Yeah, sure.
Is it okay with?
Yes, sir.
One more question for you. Is it a good practice to say if there is a, a need in the city that, you know, yes, we work on business principles, but as a city, we also are here to provide services? Is it good, is it a good practice to, to allocate money for projects such as for an indoor recreational facility and to start allocating that money so when the projects would be built, we have money there?
Well, right now, let me, let me put it this way, if we can secure and start to, to grow the reserves, you know, like we're talking about.
It's growing.
It, it grew a little bit last year, it was almost plus minus zero last year, so that's, that's why the commission decided to, you know, to raise the rates, but if, if it continues to grow, you know, that money can be, you know, utilized for, for projects. I mean, it's, it's, it's going in a, in a savings account, it can be used for that, it can be used to fund those projects, but as far as, you can set, you can set money aside for projects, if you're asking that question, you can set money aside for projects and I'll give you a, a perfect example. I don't know if you remember last year and y'all just voted on it, the money we set aside earmarked for the project up at Crestwood. That money was earmarked for Crestwood, so yes, you can, you can do that, yes.
Tim's gonna, Tim's gonna answer part of that, too.
And I just wanted to say that there's two philosophies with regard to your question. Number one is to have a reserve in place so it, it can make a down payment. The other is to bond for a large capital project, which allows the people who are using the facility or the, or the project to pay for that project. So, if you build up a large reserve, that could be considered less than equitable for the people who helped to build the reserve if they were to leave the community for whatever reason, so bonding is also a.
The rates are good now.
Equitable and they're very good now. It's a, considered an equitable means of paying typically for a project outside, you'd be looking at a, probably a 20-year term.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Finished.
That's your, okay.
For now.
It's alright.
I guess I just have a couple of broad things, then we'll just email the specifics and I appreciate that. First off, I guess, before I say a couple of broad things, I do think if you look back at the last four or five years, in our, in our city, we have done some things that other places weren't wise enough to do, which is we have made changes in staffing, we have cut things, some people have lost seven or eight positions in their department and then, and some people have done without things and our equipment, we've done without. And so, we've done things to keep us from being in a bad situation, which is where a lot of cities find themselves, so I think that's a, a really good thing. But a couple of things that strike me that I'm a little nervous about, I feel like we're underinvesting in equipment, not that I'm wanting to spend any more money than we're spending there, but I think if an outsider looks at our budget, they're gonna say we're spending too much on personnel costs and not enough on equipment, so that would be one thing I'm a little nervous about, but I think over time, we can improve that. And then the other thing is, is the, is the raise. I, I know that this is probably not a, a popular thing with some, but I, I can't support a two and a half percent raise when we just raised taxes on the whole community and most of them aren't getting a raise. We raised up 1.4 million dollars through the tax, I understand why we had to do it, but basically what you're saying is we're paying for the, of course, everybody can shuffle the money however they want, you can say it through these positions, et cetera, but basically what we're doing is we're funding this raise through the tax and funding the excess spending on the garbage and that eats up most of it, not all of it, but most of it. I would prefer that we choose a more, either not have a raise or choose a more modest approach to a raise and like a $500 flat per employee or just 1% or nothing, because I think this is, this is more than we should spend on that. And then I guess the other broad question I would have is if we are able to come up with some ways that get our healthcare costs lower, I think that's an additional savings that we will have as well. So, I guess the, the big question then would be where's, it may, doesn't have to be decided tonight, but about the raise, I think, you know, that's a, something to discuss.
Well, I think that I agree with you. We can look at the one time instead of the over the course of two different.
What, did she? I just, no, I have my head.
Okay.
What are you putting on, for me, did you have a further?
I was just agreeing with what Commissioner Roach said in part.
Maybe see what the numbers are, just at, just in a, instead of doing the one and a half and a one, so I'm just trying to clarify what you.
I was, well, I think you're.
Or just in a five.
You were saying, you were suggesting something maybe more modest and, you know, what if we just did the 1.5 in July and that'd be the end of it? It's a little bit more modest. I don't, that's gonna say it was not a huge amount of money.
Yes, 100, 100,000.
May I, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I had proposed the one and a half and the one and we split them up for a couple of reasons, but number one, your staff and, and by the way, I, I intend to take myself out of that, that increase, but I had proposed it for the staff because number one, they had not received a raise since January of 2012 and two, and I think either the second or the third staff meeting that I attended, I just approached the staff and asked about whether or not they would like to work with a somewhat leaner, yet more productive workforce and be eligible for step increases or cost of living or whether or not they wanted to continue as is. Without question, the staff was very supportive of being a leaner, more efficient, better paid, better equipped, better, better educated, better trained staff and I think that's a, probably the best philosophy, philosophy from which to work, so that's why we worked so hard to try and incorporate that into the budget that is structurally balanced, that does show a surplus for this year and yet affords our, a staff a bifurcated, if you will, cost of living increase over a six-month period of time. That was the philosophy we chose to use.
Any other? Did you have further, Steve?
One thing in line with that, I will say this, I've looked at the numbers, do you remember the little chart that I did a couple of weeks ago and had the little.
Plus you.
The little toggle switch on there?
In here, yep.
I ran the scenarios with a, a one and a half percent and, you know, we're still plus, if we did, it looks like we can run a one and a half percent, you know, consistently without any, any problem. And I think where Tim's coming from is, is we didn't, you know, since we didn't give a raise, you know, I reckon the last time we gave a raise was, 1-1, 2012 was the last, was the last raise we gave, so, you know, he was, I think, trying to make up for some of that, you know, that the folks not getting a raise in that, that period of time, so. I'm trying to put words in your mouth, but.
I just wanna say that I was in support of a raise, I really didn't have a figure in mind, so I was just glad when the budget came that it had something, because we had two things that we were trying to do, you know, one was morale and other ones was the work climate and of course, that particular raise won't help the work climate, that's something that has to be done, you know, actually at the shops themselves, you know, you mentioned training and those kinda things, I, I hope that does happen, because I think when we have a better prepared workforce, a lot of these other issues and problems will go away and I think over time, we would be to do it with less people, not because it's a goal, that's just the way efficiency works.
Right.
You know, if we can do those, work smarter, not harder and have people that look forward to coming to work, I think that would definitely work. And I'm not sure what's being used right now, I don't wanna go as far, so Christmas party, some people used to get together, you know, in their different units, I don't know if that happens now and the state government does on a small basis.
We've been having a Christmas, Christmas or Thanksgiving party, Thanksgiving party, right, it's out at the clubhouse, what we've been doing.
We didn't do it last year.
Yeah, that's right, we, we went individually, last department by department, but I know our department got together.
We're doing that breakfast still, I think.
So.
And that's the only thing I was asking, I wanted to see things move in that direction and that just happened to be one of the sad ones that I know that that can help.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you all. Any others? Well, we thank you for your work, Mr. City Manager and Budget Director.
Thank you.
Put together, quite an accomplishment to put together a budget in this day and age and have a surplus and still take care. I believe in most of the needs of the departments, I'm sure they always think that they need more.
So I'll, I'll try to field your questions when they come next several days, just let me know, and I'll, we'll get you some detailed answers.
Okay, let me let the city manager wrap.
You can probably keep this, I don't know if this is on a-
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, like, that's, that's kind of a breakdown of what's type of expenses are in there, and some of those other stuff.
Okay, did you, we don't have these, do you need that back?
You don't have, you have a copy.
I'll take a copy.
Let the city manager do a quick recap, and since this is his first budget.
I too want to thank all the department heads. I, I felt that they worked extremely hard, put together very appropriate budgets as just the need type budgets, I didn't see a lot of grills, so I would commend you all. And I especially want to thank Steve for his hard work, and he's been doing nothing but budgets for about 60 days now, and I think it's really showed. You've got a well-prepared piece of, or a document here, and Steve really worked hard at it, so I thank you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you addressing the priorities that the majority of the commission came up with. So I think you've done a tremendous job in keeping everyone informed and involved. For the commissioners that may not realize, our city manager's been providing a lot of information, and I'm sure that you enjoy getting that, and if you don't, you don't have to read it, but I'm sure you do, so we appreciate it. Is there any other business that we need to address? Or do you want to adjourn and then we'll come back on May the 20th?
Noon, is that right?
Noon for the 911 budget.
Is it here?
It's at the, it's at the Health Department, the County Health Department Office on East West Connect.
All right.
It's at noon for 911, 2 o'clock here.
Here, too.
Commissioner Haines? I just have one question, the joint meeting, is that, just like our meetings, I've not attended one of those.
We, I'm not sure who's going to actually take, take the charge of it, we, we've kind of balanced back and forth, I'm not sure if it's our turn to, to run or the county judge.
Okay, no problems, it won't affect me, it was just you and somebody else.
You don't have to call role, the judge will have to call role.
Yes, sir.
It's our meeting, okay, so we'll, we'll call our role, they'll call their role, and then I'll preside according to Ramona.
Okay.
The city clerk, rather, I'm sorry.
Okay.
If y'all have any questions in between, just ask.
Tell me the adjournment.
Move back Commissioner Bowers, second back Commissioner Haines, any discussions, see and know, all the favors thing about saying I, I oppose, please stay.
I like that.